Thank you. Mr. Seaver?
Here.
Ms. Seymour?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Lamb?
Yeah.
Mr. Fraser?
Here.
Mr. Fekes?
Here.
Ms. Jordan?
Here.
You have something to mention?
Thank you. The first item is that Lawrence Tech University, and they're going to have a presentation on the code in Alfred Toddman Engineering Life Sciences and Architecture Complex. This item denied information only, and we don't need a continuing strictly information. And you have some comments, uh, cities in every level of the time.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to indicate that, you know, this is coming before you as is the Noah's Bank facility presentation on the agenda. It's kind of just preliminary. It has not gone through the planning commission. Um, so we know that, again, under the statute and the ordinance, it needs to come through planning commission recommendation before you decide, are you interested in start making? So if you should just kind of look at it really conceptually, there will be no site plan, and you're not trying to make approvals or consensus or anything tonight, just give us some information if you want. Mr. Kirby?
Yes, thank you. Through the chair again as, uh, city attorney is here. Uh, the first time this will actually be seen by the planning commission will be Wednesday, and it'll go through the March series of study sessions, public hearing, and then ultimately come back to the city council in either April and May for your consideration. But tonight, since this is, um, a relatively new style of building, and, um, we wanted to give kind of a thirty thousand foot overview presentation on, uh, the need of this facility for Lawrence Tech University, a little background on the architect, uh, of record, uh, and, um, some of their, uh, long-term future planning on the campus. And, uh, then the representative within, Mr. Joe Verizer, the campus architect, and, uh, Alan Cobb from, uh, Albert Kahn Associates to give the initial presentation. And then there's a PowerPoint presentation and a very, uh, two very small, uh, automa- animations that last about two or three minutes each. And then staff will be available if the council has any general questions. Thank you. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Verizer, and when you're ready, I'll dim the lights over here. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. I'm Joe Verizer, and the university architect of Lawrence Tech, twenty-one thousand West Ten Mile in Southfield. So it's good to be here with you this evening because we are very proud of the project we're bringing to tell you about, and more importantly, to tell you a little bit about why it's so needed for us. I'd like to start with talking about an understanding of our campus. Most of you are familiar with the general area, and let me point out where it is. Of course, this is northwestern highway. This is Ten Mile. This is the bulk of our campus that everyone thinks about is the campus. Actually, we own a lot of the property that goes clear over here on Circle Drive, and all of this has, uh, a couple of years ago, when we've owned the ERO. Uh, but over in here is the developed part of the property that started back in nineteen fifty-five. We moved here from Heine Park, which was started out there in nineteen thirty-two. So we've been around a while and in Southfield for a while, as most of you know. Our first buildings were the engineering building down in here, followed by architecture building. This is nineteen fifty-five. This is about nineteen fifty-seven. And then we had a little bit of a hiatus for a while before we built again. And then, uh, let's see, I think the next one was science, and then we did a management building. Uh, we have a housing that came in over here on the south side of Ten Mile. It's the only property we have that's on the south side of Ten. But then we have a most recent completed building that you're most familiar with probably is our student services center. Uh, that's our lead building, and that's when we redeveloped the whole quad and did a lot for sustainability. And it's occupied about seven years ago now. Uh, we hear another thing about a building called SIMR, the Center for Innovative Material Research. And that's what, you find a lot more of our programs going in the direction laboratory and research. We have developed in, oh, about two thousand five and updated in two thousand seven, and then again in two thousand nine, strategic plans. Along with that, we developed a campus master plan. What that was to do was build off of the strategic plan that followed the business of, that we are in in education, but also to make sure that our building facilities match the strategic plan. As we look at this, there's a couple of things that are a little out of date on this because it goes back to two thousand nine, but it's close. Uh, future housing was planned over in this area. Our housing, which is going to break ground in April, if we ever do bring some snow and ice, up in here, uh, will be start. This area generally housing over in here. Future expansion zone, if we were to have a fifth college, we have four today. If we had a fifth, would we go here? Would it be the expansion of housing? That's what this area over in here is reserved for. This is a potential expansion site. You see the background here, where the baseball fields. Well, right now they have a soccer field there because athletics has returned to L T U. Uh, so this has always been looked at as the most valuable parcel. Now, since this recession, I question what parcels are valuable anymore anyway. But in any case, this has a lot of future potential for expansion or to maintain it as its Center for Athletic Program. Buildable areas on the site also include, of course, it would displace parking, but we'd have to deal with how we replace the parking area. But this is a buildable zone. This is a buildable zone down in through here. Where the existing building is can be built around or above, and the single story part of the building over in here could also be built over or replaced. So all of our needs can be met in the foreseeable future on this part of the campus. And the housing part of it and future college, if that would ever materialize, could be met on the balance of property we have over on this side. The building has many names, named after our significant donor for the building, the gate Alfred Toddman Engineering Life Sciences and Architecture of the building. Uh, it's also taken on the name Kelsa because of the letters. They got confused with Pizzla, the other one we are. So rather than that, we now call it Toddman Complex. You hear any of those three names, it's the same building, okay? When we went to the architect, architects, and I'll explain that shortly, we had some issues that are in our program about what we needed in this facility and why. It had to accommodate new programs, in particular, two programs, robotics, one that's been around a couple of years, just three or four, and biomedical engineering, which is brand spanking new, okay? We needed to accommodate those. Now, that gets me into the topic about what kind of spaces do we provide today? Now, I went to Lawrence Tech back in the sixties. When I went, every classroom had thirty to thirty-five students. We had a lot of students here. We had over four thousand students, and we had, we had about forty-two hundred back down, and it grew beyond that. And if we fit in the buildings we have them, and we built buildings now and we're out of space, how can that be? Well, when students in just being classrooms, the thirty to thirty-five students per classroom, we fit. But education process has changed. The demands of the community have changed. The kind of programs we offer and technology have changed. And as a result, we find ourselves with lab classrooms, a blur, right? What happens with that, when you have a lab, you have to diminish the size of the number of students in the classroom. So the number goes from thirty to thirty-five down to sixteen. Uh, we can squeeze, some of those were allowed to go up to eighteen, but we have certain criteria with labs that tie in to the different accreditation requirements for the different programs in each of the colleges. So all of a sudden, we're, we're at the same number of students, but need almost twice as much space. Therein lies the problem. Also, those same rooms that used to be used like classrooms, got many sections going through them every day. A lot of students go through it. And now when you make them labs, they become quasi-dedicated, and now you can't run as many sections through there, only limited to that which works with the technology that's been placed in that lab. So it does cause us a space crunch. Now, along with that, I should mention, because it goes hand in hand with the type of students we have. You know, when they started out in Heine Park and moved out here in fifty-five to Southfield, the radius they grew from was the metropolitan area. Time goes on, and we stretch to an area that would be half of a ten mile radius, about as far, almost to plant, about two-thirds of the way to Lansing. We had the lake area on the east and the southern suburbs and south. And that was enough to get us forty-two hundred students. Today, we have about forty-two hundred students. Today, we have students from forty-six countries. Today, we have students from out of state. We have students from outstate. And there, or we ended up having to come, before you once before, a few years ago, talking about the need for more housing. Yeah, I'm sure the D's going to come, and we'll be talking about even more housing. So not only has the education process changed, the nature of our students have changed. We get them here, we have to accommodate, we have to house them, and that's good for us, and it's good for Southfield too. So one of our programs, our program requirements was to accommodate the new programs, the two drawings, the most current, the most technological ones that are being in demand today. Then we wanted to link between science and engineering buildings. If you remember, I pointed out this was a science building over here, and this is the engineering building. Well, there's a, a link needed because we have an academic link. Biomedical engineering is, is accredited as an engineering curriculum in the College of Engineering, and it's headed by people from engineering. However, the staff that supports it all comes out of the sciences that are in the other building. So they're trying to move carts with samples and small equipment and apparatus, trying to go between two buildings. Especially in this climate, it's very, would be very difficult, and it is difficult, and it's a problem for them. So one of the requirements that they had to be able to link the facilities together, that became an important element. The other thing was that the, not only share programs and faculty, but academic, universities are known for having silos. Every college has a silo that they are, I'm getting a nod over here, you know, uh, they are very silo-driven, very competitive between. Well, over the years, we've been able to start to drive that away. Hey, it wasn't there too, it's everywhere. But we've been able to push it away. We did a lot of that even in the staff areas, we built the student services center. We used to have all the functions that are in there all over the campus, brought them all together and had to share services, share functions, limiting overlaps and duplicity, okay? So with that, the same problem has occurred in engineering and science. They have come together. They are working together, and actually, they work together well. It's never been a people issue. It's always been a political issue at any university. So it was important that we dealt with that. And lastly, how students learn? When I talk about a classroom of thirty to thirty-five students, you talk about somebody standing here like I'm doing and educating people in front of them. That is how people learn and are most productive and most creative. Greatest creativity and greatest opportunity for learning comes in a collaborative environment, is where students get together and share ideas and grow and build off of one another. And that's not something new. I mean, that's been going on for a long time, which is smart enough to realize. And all, all educational entities today are leaning in that direction. And that means you need some space outside of the classrooms where people can congregate in small groups of two, three, or four, and not just go sit in a library around a table that holds six and put them in row after row. I think that's the education opportunity. That's a part of it, but that's not all of it. So we had to deal with these were the three significant items that the architect is charged for. Now, I said there were two architects. Yeah, well, I didn't really need two architects on the job, folks. We have people in Michigan. We have people in Detroit. We have people in Southfield. Uh, we have a college of architecture. We have college of engineering. We have a lot of our students hired, employed by all of them, so we have great talent here. So why have two? Well, we also have a donor, Mr. Toddman. And he says, you know, when you have two consultants, you have a rub, and that's good, and that's healthy for you, the owner, and you get more bang for your buck, okay? And I talked to him about that some day. Uh, he believed it was in our best interest. Uh, we tried to talk him out of that, but he believed it was in our best interest. But he, you know, I gotta hand him, and he said to us, it's your building, do what you want. And we wanted to have two architects. Uh, we respectfully listened to our donors, and, and I mean that sincerely. I'm not trying to make fun of them. We do respect his opinion, and, and so we honored that, and we hired two firms. How did we do that? We hired, first of all, a very qualified firm from this area, went through the selection process, and we hired the firm of Albert Kahn Associates. Uh, and with the help of Albert Kahn, we selected a firm to be the design architect, and they are a consultant to Albert Kahn's office. So while Albert Kahn's office has done other work, like Lear, here in Southfield, they're qualified, and they're designed credentials, uh, they have some help, and that's from a company called Morphosis. They're a whole other name, Tom Main. You'll hear more about that from the next speaker. Uh, that's about, I think, all I had to offer you, and I'm going to turn it over now to a gentleman, Alan Cobb. Now, Alan is an alumnus of, of L T U, uh, not quite as long ago as I was, but he is not only an alumnus from L T U, but he's also the president and chief executive officer for Albert Kahn Associates. Alan?
Thank you, Joe. Well, Joe went in the sixties. I actually went in the seventies to Lawrence, so there's a little bit of difference there. But I think, uh, I, I think this really has been a good experience in terms of marrying the two firms together between Morphosis and Albert Kahn. Uh, you, some of you may know about our firm. Uh, we're a hundred and eighteen year old firm headquartered here in Detroit. We have offices in Birmingham, Alabama, and Sao Paulo, Brazil. We're doing a lot of work in South America right now. Uh, we are an integrated firm. We have architects and engineers in an integrated way. We deliver outstanding design. And our, our really main focus, and certainly my career focus since going to Lawrence Tech, has been sustainable design and energy efficiency. And that is in fact, the, the connective tissue that we found between ourselves and Tom Main and Morphosis. Tom Main started this firm in the seventies. Actually, he grew up in Chicago and went to Southern California. Uh, he was dean of SciARC and teaches at, uh, UCLA School of Architecture currently. He just received the gold medal in two thousand thirteen from the American Institute of Architects National. Very noteworthy, noteworthy architect, uh, award-winning architect globally, has done significant work, and I think Alfred Toddman is quite happy with our selection of time in terms of bringing, uh, really cutting-edge inspiration for the students and, and for faculty that are teaching at Lawrence. Uh, really, it's been a, it's been a very good relationship, and, and as I said, we have a lot in common, as they work internationally as well. Actually, Joe mentioned the Lear project. I was, I was project principal for Lear project. Um, and we're very, very happy with the outcome there, uh, in terms of keeping the project, keeping their headquarters in Southfield. Uh, that building is energy conscious. We did a number of things to help the environment through that process, cleaned up the site, kept the storm drainage on-site and cleansed it in, in rain gardens and bioswales. Uh, that building also has a scrim element, a shading device, um, that is, that helps with energy usage on, on the project. We're currently working, uh, on completing renovations and adaptive reuse of the Cobble Center. Uh, that has similar kinds of glazing systems in the exterior wall. And you, and, and you all might know the fact that Albert Kahn himself was responsible for fourteen of the first nineteen buildings on, on the central campus of the University of Michigan. In the last decade, we've renovated two-thirds of those. Um, and so our, it's not like higher education, uh, design isn't, uh, part of our DNA at, at Kahn, and, uh, actually, Tom Main and Morphosis shares the same kind of connection and, and, uh, experience in the higher education, uh, market segment. Uh, here you see a couple of projects. The Cooper Union Building was one that the Lawrence Tech Administration visited in the selection process for Tom Main. One thing to note, similar to what we did at Lear, this building has a scrim device, a shading device on the exterior of, and that makes it somewhat unique. It also has kind of a signature piece that Tom Main utilizes in many of his higher education projects, and that is a central gathering stair and interaction stair to, to promote the idea of impromptu meetings and synergy between students and faculty, eliminating the silos that, that Joe is talking about to get that communication working. They've also done some very high-tech laboratories. Uh, this one at Caltech in, in Southern California. Actually, Joe and I went out and, and toured this, this facility with the Morphosis staff during the early phases of design. And we used both the portfolios of Albert Kahn and Morphosis and, and others nationally to, to benchmark for this facility. This facility wants to be a world-class, state-of-the-art facility for the bridging of sciences and engineering. The building will act as a bridge to pull these things together, and Joe mentioned that a little bit. But we looked at Salt Institute, uh, university buildings at Cornell University. Many, many similar competitors here in the state. We did the Grainger Center at Ferris State University, very cutting-edge facility up there. And Smith Group has just completed or is completing now, it's in construction, the engineering school at Oakland University. These buildings are attractors to the, to the university students that are looking, uh, at, at a college. And, and so the facilities are an important part of, of the marketing and, and development of these, these young minds and, and an important attractor. And as, as Joe kind of pointed out, he keep, he kind of went through the master plan in detail. Uh, we're looking at, uh, the site that becomes a kind of a joint in between the engineering building and the science building for, for our project. And going back to the diagram he was referencing, uh, there is sufficient, uh, land in this area to handle the amount of gross area, the, the, the requirements of the program quite nicely in this first phase. We're also leaving good, uh, amount of area around the existing complex for future expansion. We studied, uh, a lot, through the early process, we studied a lot of the existing characteristics of, of the buildings, uh, how, uh, students go from parking into each of the buildings, how the entrances work, how they relate to one another. Very important part of, of the student services building, which is the last building that was built here, is that we begin to see this wonderful, uh, diag and, and courtyard, the campus green. And with an addition, with, with the location of a building here, we then really frame this, this wonderful outdoor space and really create a nice intimate environment for the Lawrence Tech campus. Again, we looked at how the campus is viewed from outside, uh, what the entrances are along the lodge, uh, Service Drive and Ten Mile, and how that works with, uh, the, the location of this new building. Uh, Morphosis has, uh, three D printers in, in their office. They use, they, they develop models. Uh, I think, I think we had twenty models for the building already. And, uh, here you see kind of a programmatic, uh, diagram of one of the, one of the concepts we looked at. We probably looked at about twenty different concepts. And, um, uh, the, the program elements, uh, life sciences are the light green. Uh, the engineering and, and robotics are the, are the, uh, rust color, and the light blue is kind of the general studies and laboratory areas. So we looked at different ways of stacking the programs within different kind of building configurations to arrive at, at the right kind of solution. We've worked with, uh, probably three dozen groups with, with the university, with all of the faculty that, that are going to be using this building and have access to it. And here you see one of the study models that we were creating to, to really try to get the right kind of nesting of program elements. So looking at the site, uh, three dimensionally, with, uh, the two-story engineering building, uh, this being the, the furthest east, uh, the, our building site is located here. And then back at the science building with, uh, the site being in this location. This is just a very early concept sketch of, of our building. Here you see the, the connection then to the, to the engineering school here. Now, the building is three stories tall and leaps over and connects to the science building, uh, on the north edge. And now what I'm going to do is try to get to the animations. Here you see it in three dimensions, with engineering, Toddman Center, and science building, our site being, being here. We really think that this building can become the vehicle that really brings the, the engineering curriculum together with the life sciences, science curriculum, to really help that transition. Here you see what I mentioned before, the idea of a shading device or scrim on the outside of the building to help promote the, the, the cutting down the heat gain. This is to be a lean silver building, and it couldn't, it couldn't in fact make it to the gold level. So we're, we're trying to be very energy conscious as we develop the systems for this project. Here you see the, this, this signature feature from Tom Main, the, the communicating stair, collaborative stair. Main entrance to the building is actually off the quad side. This is actually a little bit out of date in that there's more water here than will exist in the final product. The, uh, the object that you see here is a communicating stair, another element that's Details of the building are extremely important with architects and engineers occupying this building. You see a lot of attention to the details. There's going to be some, some of the construction that's exposed to kind of tell the story of the building. This large two-story space, uh, space on the science floor will be used as a collaborative Then we have another, uh, animation that, uh, is used for fundraising. Then we have another animation that is used for fundraising.
Some of the things that you'll see in the video that you're about to watch are them developed working with a local firm that does animations and are advanced in office. And they focus on things that are different that you might build slightly because they're out to get naming opportunities and fundraising. And so if they think it makes a better picture, they'll use it for adjusted. A little stretch of the imagination. They're pretty close though.
Now, this is the view coming in from the Service Drive, view from the east. The building acts as a kind of a frame to the, to the Vista and entry to the quad. Here you see on the right, there's a seating area for students. They'll be taking the water out of that. We have a little reflecting pool under the, the stair on the opposite side. You see a little bit, a little more refinement in the interior images.
Remind you what summer looks like. We'd be happy to answer any questions. We're happy about it. We presented this today. We'd love to enroll some questions.
Hey, do, in the, the video, it doesn't, I'm sure it's just a half that much. Didn't look like it was ADA compatible. In place, I saw stairs, but I didn't see any.
There is an elevator in the building. We do have ADA, we are ADA compliant.
Actually, we, it actually, we corrected some issues that exist currently in the existing building here. We're adding an ADA lift at the apartment so we can get to the lower level of the stage and the auditorium. And the, the main entrance here on the quad side is engraing, and that gets you to the elevator, so that you're safe.
I just didn't see anything.
That's a good question. We have a lot of stairs.
Yeah, I saw a lot of those.
Uh, it's fabulous. So I have a question. Kind of followed what you were doing. This is the refinement of where I fell last. You raised your mind.
Got there.
Yeah, so I'm excited.
Thank you, thank you.
What is your, what is your, what is your date that you would like to get started?
Well, we're planning bidding it during the summer, and we'd like to break ground in middle of November. I'm sorry, September, middle of September. Like to get it underway and get foundations in and do some underground work in. And then we go kind of on a hiatus for a while, waiting for steel to arrive. It's a long delivery period, twelve to sixteen weeks, maybe a little more. And so it'll sit for a while through the winter months. We pick up in the spring. We expect it to complete in October, February, and March of 2016. About a fifteen-month interval for construction.
It'll make the new president's office in your building.
We don't have any room for it in this building. We're using every square inch for students.
Well, you built one.
You have all of your engineering dollars, have you been done?
We're about halfway through the construction documents right now. If all goes well, I will get a fifty percent set tonight from Alan to review.
We're fifty percent finished, your construction documents.
It is.
Amazing.
And we've been at it for about fifteen, sixteen months now, so it's taken a while to get this done.
Well, it looks very attractive. If you, you know, the people that have to make this work feel that it's meshed up and we got what you need in terms of the, the kind of commerce for the students, then I don't think you can tell me if you're guys.
But you know, one of the things that happened in this idea of architects, I joke about it a bit because it is a, I mean, it, it is a bit of a, the rub is there and it gets difficult, a story. And Alan developed the contract, they had to sort out who was doing what between the two firms. So there is the, the Tom's office responsible for is the prime and the other is the support and vice versa. Well, there are those in the design side that are so intense that even when they don't own it, they own it. And so we get through that. But you know, the end result of that whole effort, that rub that's there, while it makes it very difficult at times, you know, I've got to say in the end, I think we do get a better job on the planning, the challenging. I mean, it's, it's a lot harder, but I think we're getting better of a product out of this than we would have, no offense, but than with only one.
Sure.
Brilliant.
Quite a number of years working with architects. I get that because I understand, you know, there's, there's that sense of you have your own philosophy and design, kind of status and community. I don't mean you, I mean, you know, to the architects.
No, it's true, no.
Right. So when you come together, you're going to have, you're going to have some public impact. But I think to get what you need for a public purpose, I think that is hard, it's difficult, but it is, I think, absolutely. So we're courageous and do the right thing.
Well, the common ground for us has been sustainability, energy conscious design.
Correct, right, right.
And, and we're, I mean, we both have the existing architecture that we have to deal with and come up with a way to marry it all together. I didn't mention that, but the building is really trying to collect a lot of different ideas on that campus and kind of synthesize them in one architectural statement and try to pull the campus together a bit. And I think we're doing that.
I, I think you're going to take an enormous, tremendous project because just like what you say, you're not starting new, which would be a lot of fun, you know, it's a huge challenge. So, but to me, it makes perfect sense what you've done and the way you've done it because you're getting a better product. It's good to have people that just agree, I think, absolutely.
That's your point.
I almost guarantee that.
I'm, I'm really, I'm really, I'm pleased with the process, quite frankly. I think you were very courageous and very wise to do that.
Mr. Crowe, can you give us the, the planning schedule internally as the world happens next?
Yes, through the chair. They're scheduled for their first study session with the Planning Commission on Wednesday, the fifth. And then depending on, the council might come back one more time to the Planning Commission this month. They're scheduled for a public hearing on the twenty, twenty-sixth of March. And if, if the Planning Commission recommends approval at that time, it'll be back before the council in April, no later than May. So we, we're on target to bring this through in a three-month process. And as, just with the timing and the scheduling of this call, we, we wanted to have this presentation so you were aware of what was going on and that it is going to the Planning Commission, but they will be seeing this for the first time on Wednesday.
I, I guess back to LTU, when would you be submitting construction documents and that for review?
Is it June, around the, end of June? We said the target, I think it was fourth of July was our nominal date.
Yes.
If we can beat that, we're going to beat it because we'd like to get time to bid. The nature of some of the things we're doing with the scrim and with that obelisk for the stair enclosure, it has the potential to cause us some difficulty in the bidding process. It's going to take some time after bids are received to iron out. So we had to have enough interval in there. The sooner we can do that, the better. And then move into a more sound prep.
Yeah, and I, I see that Michael Mannion's here. I just want to make sure that everything about this project is hand-in-hand with our city's communication too. We're very proud of this. I mean, this is a significant investment in Southfield, and anytime that that happens, it's important to communicate to other key stakeholders that Southfield's worth investing in, worth building in. I just want to make sure that, you know, you know, from, at least from my, my personal opinion, and I hope the rest of the councils, that, you know, we want to keep this communication going and making sure that this project is successful and that the city is able to be proud of it and boast about it too.
Can you tell us the budget on this project?
Yeah, I can tell you that. Our total project budget for the whole thing, all-in cost, was a fifteen million dollar undertaking.
Oh, I thought it was three twenty-five.
Well, we, we hope it's going to be only fifteen million, let's put it that way. Right now, our estimate, we hired a separate consultant that's an expert in estimating. It's all he does. He's been in business over forty years. I've worked with him many times. And the first budget that came in compared, the first estimate compared to our budget was only eight million over. We got that down to one million over, and so we're somewhere between fifteen and sixteen all-in cost. That's about eleven to twelve million dollars worth of brick and mortar cost, actual budget for construction. So that's bringing a lot of, twelve million dollars worth of, or I figure half or more of that is labor coming to the area. That's good news.
For the chair, if I could, that's for phase one.
Oh, yeah, that's a good point.
Which is about thirty-four thousand square feet. In comparison, I believe your dormitor is about eleven million. And then maybe you want to just talk about long-range tying everything together in your capital campaigns.
The capital campaign that started in two thousand six identified in two thousand six dollars needs that added up to about fifty-five million dollars. Today, that's a much bigger number. We haven't evaluated what that new number is, but we know what this one's going to cost. This one's about two million more than what we said it would be last time we looked in two thousand eight or two thousand nine. So we're probably looking on the whole undertaking of building needs that we looked at in two thousand six. Instead of fifty-five, I'm going to guess before we're done, that's going to look like sixty-five to seventy realistically. That's a combination of new construction and alteration of existing. Existing single-story wing of the, the engineering building is a lab, originally built as a lab wing, has no air conditioning except through window, window units. It, it is outdated by far, means nothing in the way of sustainable design, and that needs to be changed. Now, whether that'll be an alteration or a vertical addition, who knows? People ask me, when is phase two? Phase two going to move to the south and more of the same, like the scheme showed from Morphosis? Depends on where the next program grows. If the next program is in biomedical engineering or robotics, probably along that, that, that path. If it were to be architectural engineering, which we now offer and are graduating our first class in, if it's in that area, it's probably going to be in that B wing that we'll be dealing with. That's that single-story engineering lab wing. That's going to need attention and that, that would be the next thing that happens. So that's probably a few years out, depending on fundraising. Remember, we don't, we don't, we don't have any trough to go to for a private institution. And we don't want to put capital improvements on the backs of our students. So what we end up doing is having to do fundraising for all of our building, and we've done that for the last several buildings built on the campus. Early ones, I don't know. Everything we've done in the last twenty years is all bound through philanthropy. So the degree to which we raise cash and some amount of debt is how fast we can build to meet our need. When we complete this, it'll be full. The day we complete this, if somebody says, I got a, I need a, I've got a need for a thousand-square-foot lab, I haven't got it. So then we have to figure out what we do. You know, what program isn't good enough that we have to slowly take it out of service and turn that over. So we, we try to turn on a dime, and we can't quite do that. Economics gets in the way, but our plans are a little flexible for the future, but it is an ultimate large program.
Yeah, about ten years ago, about nine, ten years ago, I had a database worth ten million dollars. I came to the president of your institution, and I had a meeting with his advisor, and she said, oh, terrific. He turned it down. And he was going to get it to nothing.
Well.
Now, let me tell you.
Yeah, I mean.
So at that time, you will be, he was behind the times, that's all.
You know, there are, in that site, in that overall plan that we talked about here, you know, there are, in this half here, this circle drive over, there's three properties we don't know. One sitting down here and two are here. And they're valuable to us. Will we ever get them? I don't know. Can we work around them?
Yeah.
Does it make it more difficult?
Yes.
This one is not as critical to us. These are important to us. Well, not the end of the world. We own enough that we can do a lot and develop, we own a few parcels over here. We've been collecting parcels since they moved here in fifty-five. That's opportunities of those. See, your story though, about decisions made.
You know what happened to that database? It was in my car. My car was stolen four years ago with everything.
Oh, wow. Well, talk about decisions made though, because we were collecting this. I'm, I know that we had property that we owned over here that for whatever reason they sold. If I learned someday that it was one of those two.
Well, that's behind the times.
Yeah, I mean, you just don't have the crystal ball that makes it one hundred percent accurate, and, and you look back and you say, jeez, I wish we had it. And this is what it is. You play the cards, you go.
I had two questions before I answered. One about fundraising, the second one, what is now your athletic field, which is on our western highway? Did I understand you say that would become incorporated into this project? So will that be?
Not incorporated into it, in a future expansion. It's conceivable that there's a path, like with the wooden bridges, that goes in between the trees nicely, fits, and that it would span over that and terminate on the other side of the wooded area at the edge of that quarter field. Now, that's good news for convenience of getting across to there. It's also fantastic view as you go there. And if and when we ever did that, the only penetration we have into that wilderness is soil erosion and control for vertical posts to deal with that. So we have minimal disruption of anything, no, no harm.
But the athletic field would, would be still, would be used for that field or would it be gone?
Well, the idea is right now that we would continue indefinitely to use it for student athletics. That was not in our planning originally until we had a consultant that came in and said, if you want to continue to grow and get people from afar to come here, there are some things you have to do. And one of them is reinstitute athletics, which we stopped doing athletics when we moved to Southfield before. Had it not apart, lost it here. That was a mistake. And talk about decisions made. If they had it to do over, I think they'd have found a way to try it again. But now, we know we're gonna have athletics. If an opportunity came and it was important to have that corner for something else, we would move athletics over into that area over in here. We got enough space in here to do athletics. One way or the other, we play them as a couple.
But the green space may not remain natural space as it is.
Yeah. Where it's in right now, when we're talking about building, it's kind of void except for a couple of trees. And so we'll be improving that slightly over in there. There isn't much opportunity with that as compared to what we did with housing over here. We're planting 140 tree, trees minimum over there. This is gonna be about here on there on the whole campus right over in three years.
You gotta do what you gotta do.
That's right. I want you to build a deck over the freeway. Oh, don't you start that again.
Well, that's something that we would have to... We would have to lobby to get one from the state to do that.
Yeah.
You can't possibly have that, nor can you...
And then you gotta have somebody to go when you get there.
Right. Well, the long-term thought was, and it was one of our, I think it was one of our city's little plans that actually done by your studio, I believe, that showed a deck for the freeway, which I thought was wonderful, I think.
It's still a potential. I mean, it comes up repeatedly by the people in civil engineering and that and in architecture and the urban planning area. It's come up with students that worked with you in the urban planning.
Just a matter of months. That would be great, though. That would be just fantastic. So we're hoping... I don't think that dream is gonna go away.
No, I don't think so either. It's a natural...
Football arena over the freeway. All right, it's crazy.
Yeah, a couple of questions. Will this new construction allow you to have additional students on campus? Or is this just a service that students that you have now? I think you said you had about 4,200 now.
We have about 4,200 students right now. The number doesn't change much. It might go up a little bit. But again, it's because of the shift in the kind of students we're getting aboard. Even two of the spaces in there were called, in that two-story area, of course, it's gonna be offered there as intro to the engineering. And every student coming into engineering has to go through it. And it's a two-year program. They complain they don't have space. What we found out was that class, which we thought was classroom, is studio. And studio is maximum at 16 students a year. So right now, we're migrating in a program that's being taught like a class in our 4,200 number. And as we move into that building, we're moving into studio environment and reducing it to 16. So the end result is we got more space and we're still hanging in there at that 4,200 plus or minus number. So might it go up? If it does, it's not gonna go up much.
The other question I had was that. I know you can always, you get postgraduate degrees.
Yes.
Will this increase the number of postgraduate degrees that you'll get with a biomedical...
Yeah, it will. I mean, we offer postdoctorate, postgraduate degrees, doctorates. Not many of them, but a few. And this will expand the students that are in that kind of program. That's true. Especially in the biomedical engineering, the top floor of the building. That will enhance that, that's true. That's another thing I didn't mention. And that's the, you know, we used to brag, and we still do brag, about being theory and practice. But our practice now, that we have a whole bunch of adjuncts that come from the real world. Well, we still have adjuncts coming from real world. But the number, the ratio that we have of total full-time faculty, the doctorates that are teaching at that upper level has magnanimously grown. When I went to launch that in the 60s, just to give you an example of something, just in the College of Architecture, that I know best, one full-time faculty member, gunning Jim Abernathy, only guy. Today, they have 28 full-time faculty plus adjuncts. That's how big that number has changed in full-time, higher-credential, more theory-based type people with some practical experience that we bring in the full-time staff positions. So some of the labs that we create, one of the labs we're creating is just a research space for use by faculty because that's the only way you're gonna come work for them. You have to offer them an opportunity to do their research. And the dean of engineering in the existing science building has a lab that's just hers for her research. That's different. That's a different world than we have lived in in the past.
By having the postgraduate students, you'll give them an opportunity to stay here in the city of Southfield longer and get to know what we are and who we are. And that's one of the things we're trying to work on, how to bring younger people in and keep them.
And keep them here even after they graduate.
That's right.
Get them liking it, loving it, and staying.
That's right.
Yeah, we're in the same plan.
Okay.
We're there.
I have a question relative to Clinton Council with John Steck and Southfield merging a position with the 10-year graduate and how we can work together. Activities keeping students there on campus engaged with the council.
Well, this working together works nice until it hurts somebody. You know, I have it hurting me right now. I have a young student that works for me who's very good. He's a very good grad student. And now he's gonna come work for somebody who's... There he is, Kerry. He's gonna come work for Kerry by time, and I lose him. So this is togetherness.
All right, thank you so much, Joe and Tom.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much, please.
All right, council, the next item on our agenda is basically the same in terms of no facilities needed and information as well. And that's the preliminary and review of Noah's Bank facility.
Thank you. Good evening, council.
Thank you.
The proposed project reported this evening is the one in which the developers looking at the American Commerce Center site. American Commerce Center is currently on 11 Mile Road. We're between Franklin and then Hengster Road to the west. This particular site was developed as a master plan in 1997. It's pretty much just an office development. Currently on the property, we have a CBS radio. We have Meadowbrook Insurance. There's an extended stay hotel. Barton Mallow's offices are here, their main offices, as well as another office along 11 Mile. And then the Brookdale Senior Living Development also is on that particular piece of property. What the people here this evening, from a presentation standpoint, are looking at is the area that's shown there in the yellow. It's directly south and east of the Extended Stay Hotel for a Noah's Bank facility. If I may, because the master plan was developed for office in this particular area, in order to allow, first of all, this type of use on the property, we would have to amend the master plan, first of all. Really, what the petitioner is here tonight is basically just to kind of give you an overview of who Noah's is and just the presentation services and then help decide from there as to whether to look forward with this particular site. So with that, I'm gonna introduce Mr. Kurt Overmeyer. He's with Guggenheim Retail Real Estate Partners. And he'll give you, again, the overview on Noah's.
Kurt Overmeyer, 3,000 Internet Boulevard in Frisco Heights. We're a developer for Noah's nationwide. Noah's started about eight years ago. The brainchild of a guy named Bill Bowser. He's an engineer by trade. And he spent a great part of his, a long part of his, for about 20 years, doing presentations and seminars at hotels and convention facilities across the country. And over time, he got very frustrated with that process of scheduling rooms, scheduling catering, scheduling furniture, scheduling slide shows, all the stuff. There was no kind of all-in-one place to go. And he continued in his career. And in the back of his head, for about five or 10 years, this idea started developing. And he thought at one, at some point about the year 2000, he said, you know what, I'm gonna try it. I'm gonna start researching, figure out how to do it. He's from Utah. And he opened his first facility in Utah in 2006, 2007. And it's, the first facility is about 22,000 square feet, quite a bit larger than what we're planning here. He built another facility that was about half that size. And then he built a third facility in Arizona that was 12,000 square feet. And then he kind of just watched how the facilities work. And his idea was that it would be a upscale facility, state-of-the-art technology with data and audiovisual equipment, a lot of flexibility for uses, whether it be corporate or personal events. And as the concept kind of developed in front of him, he continued to kind of research and figure out ways of doing it better. And the fourth facility built was outside of Dallas. And that is a very close building to what we're proposing here. But now he's built three more that are very similar to this building. And this photo here is actually one of the Utah projects. All the buildings are stone, brick, high-end finishes on the inside and outside, pretty elaborate landscaping. The newer facilities have, he calls it a garden or a patio. And they use that for kind of a staging area in between events. But also, if it's a personal event, they do photographs and kind of reception area outside the company. So these first couple of pictures, these are in Utah. This is the first facility in Dallas. There's actually three facilities in Dallas right now. There's two more under construction. And there's two in Houston that are under construction. And that's as far east as he's gone. Not that he hasn't wanted to go farther, but he's kind of just gradually working his way across on his own. Well, about a year and a half ago, he got involved with Guggenheim Partners. And we presented to him an idea of growing nationally where he had been able to do two or three years. We've got an agreement with him where we're gonna try to do 25 to 35 a year. And so he's actually originally from Ohio. And we're looking at sites in Ohio and Michigan, kind of this whole Midwest area. But on a couple of tours that he's made, Southfield was one of the first places he wanted to go. I'm not exactly sure why. I mean, I know it's a great pro-business facility. I'm not from here. But I know that, what I understand is that he targeted Southfield. He's targeted a few other areas here. So he's very excited about this area. There's three main rooms to the facility. It's a little over 10,000 square feet. This room is called the boardroom. And it's, here it's set up for a meeting, but it can also be set up for an informal gathering. You can see the screen on the wall. They have, again, each room is set up where it could, there could be a separate presentation going on in each room. Or if someone's using the facility and needs all three spaces, they can do that as well. This room is sometimes called the groom's room. But it's also another, it's got some other nicknames at some of the facilities. But the furniture can all be moved around as well. So if it needs to be set up for tables, they can do that pretty easily. And in this, in the newer version of this building, there's actually, in this room, there's a long table that's down at this end of the room that actually goes up out of the floor. So it can be set up for, I think it's 24 people at a table. And then the table can go down the floor. It can be a more accessible setting. This room is, this is the chapel, sometimes called the chapel. Most of the corporate and business events happen during the week. Right, in most, in all the locations he has, the spread of events is about 50/50. During the week, obviously, during the day, it's corporate and business and seminars and training sessions, that kind of thing. And then Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, it tends to be more personal events like weddings, receptions, graduation parties, anniversaries, that kind of thing. So, and because the flexibility of the furniture and the way the rooms are set up, it's very easy to transition from one kind of event to another. This is the great hall. And it's hard to see it here, but there's actually a stage in the back area by the wall that can come up a couple of feet out of the floor for either a presentation or actually a wedding, you know, if you're a good person. And the, in this room also, the, in the more current versions, there are some ceiling panels that are movable. So you can actually set up lights and drapes and everything in a bunch of different ways. And the Noah's, they have a designer on staff that helps you. You can do it all online, but that helps you design the space the way you want to use it for either a wedding or corporate event. That's the same room. And this room, maximum seating, it can be between 115, 200 people. That shows the same room. And that's actually another version of how the lights and the drapes are set up. You can see the movable panels. It can act, you can actually set up in a vault or you can set it up in a bunch of different formations. The stage is on the end. You can see it raised up out of the floor. Same room. Building has walnut wood floors throughout. High-level of finish on the lights and the sound panels. Another view of the boardroom with just a different furniture configuration. And this is the secondary meeting room. And that's the chapel set up a different way. All the events are catered. There's no kitchen on site. So all the customers actually schedule, they can schedule with Noah's as their planner, they can do it on their own. But typically, the catering and Noah's company, they get to know each other pretty well. And he likes to recommend, you know, local businesses and work closely with hotels and other businesses to coordinate meetings, but also to refer guests that are coming in town for an event to hotels, that kind of thing. And that's another view of the, sometimes called the grincer. It's kind of unique because the building is actually the product for Noah's. And I probably haven't done justice. Bill is very excited about his concept and very persuasive. And he's kind of poured his whole life into it. Couple of his children are involved with the company. And he pretty much spends his life on the road wanting to look at new sites and trying to get these things developed. And he has a personal goal to try and be at the first wedding at every facility. So far, he's managed to do that. And we're hoping he can keep doing that.
Okay, thank you. There are some questions from council.
Yes, I said that, what was his name again?
Bill Bowser. Bill Bowser.
Bill Bowser. So he was very excited about Southfield.
Yes.
And why?
Um, I know he's from this area. Greg may be able to help me out here. Greg's working with us on-
Have you been from this area?
Well, I'm actually, I'm the real estate broker that's representing Noah's, walking, walk, struggling around and trying to help him find locations in the Michigan market just to write for Greg Newman from Keystone Commercial Real Estate on over at thirty-one thousand Northwestern Highway here in Farmington Hills. So we, when we evaluated the market to pick where Noah's would want to go, we looked at some of the markets that would, that have a large concentration of office population because a lot of their events are comprised of corporate events. But we looked for areas that comprise a minimum of five million square feet of office space in the area. Typical settings for the Noah's facilities are set in these office parks traditionally throughout the country because they like to be quiet during the weekends. And in, you know, during the week, everyone knows where they are because they're part of the community. And on the weekends, there's no cars or anything, so if they're having a wedding there, the bride and groom and the families can go there. It's very quiet, there's no traffic and it can have very nice peaceful settings. So when we were identifying locations, the few areas that we've identified in Michigan are Southfield, Auburn Hills and the North Villaboni area because of the three, you know, those are really the three large concentrations of high-tech office and, and making those communities competitive as well.
So he's not from the city, but you are?
I, I live in the city, yeah. I live in West Palm Beach, Michigan, but Bill is originally from Toledo, but he lives in Ohio, in Salt Lake City, Utah.
That, the sites, how does the hotel feel, why did you talk to them?
So we don't, hotels love us because what we do is we bring in activity for the hotels. So if there's a wedding, we like to be near hotels. All the guests can stay at hotels. We, typically, we don't take away business from the hotels because the rooms that, that they have aren't as large and they can't accommodate the same amount of people that we can. So we try to be cognizant of that when picking locations. We like to work with communities as against.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm, yes, my question, I think it's, it's good to help.
I'm Mr. Lane.
He answered everything that was speaking to Noah's. I have all the answers.
And if you could give us your, since it's a special, particularly in your name again.
My name is Greg Newman. I'm with Keystone Commercial Real Estate. My address is at thirty-one thousand Northwestern Highway in Farmington Hills, Michigan.
Did you hear what I said?
No, I didn't.
You answered everything when you, when you told, you don't. Well, I have, I have your answer.
We just want to make sure, you know, people come at me a lot times with a lot of enthusiasm and they don't do homework. I don't, shouldn't expect that of you because this is a business. But it's very nice to hear that, that you're excited about coming here.
And could you give us the dollar amount of the investment that'll be made in this project?
Um, less the land cost, the building and all the fixtures is around two million dollars.
Okay, Mr. Prime, continue for, Mr. Spencer's gonna give us the internal planning schedule of this type of.
Yeah, I may. At this moment, at this point, they have yet to submit plans even to our department. So I guess really the ball is in your court as to getting us plans as soon as possible. As it stands right now, we're at the beginning of March. If they already get us plans within the next week or so, we'd probably be able to get them on an April agenda. But probably more likely, we're probably looking more at May. At least from a planning commission standpoint, that may be kind of before council.
Jeff said, um, how does, he says, in the master plan, in what way? What was there that's being changed?
Yeah, again, because in the master plan, the entire area was designed for offices. Now, the, at the southern portion along Eighth, along Eleven Mile Road, there was a building that was originally planned for retail. It did have to come back before you for an amendment to the master plan for office. So we have to do the same thing with this one, again, because it was office, to go over to a type of use like a banquet facility, it is an amendment to the master plan.
Thank you.
Very beautiful building now, Mr. Spencer.
I just, I know you want to know if, how we feel, if it's not a vote, but I was welcome. So I encourage you to move your plans along.
I think that in most communities, the reception is well-received to the communities because of what it brings.
Three hotels right there.
Yeah, Jeff, what would this be called? You said banquet facilities?
Uh, I believe that, that's the way it was portrayed to us, was like a banquet facility, yes.
Is there, is there any, any other thing that, well, I'm thinking of the parking, how it, is there any other category that it could be called that wouldn't?
Basically, we would look at it as a facility that doesn't have fixed seats. So it'd be like an auditorium-type use or, I guess that's how we would probably have to look at it in relationship with zoning ordinance. We don't have any specific area in the zoning ordinance that calls off banquet facilities, but it is an area of non-fixed seats or gathering place.
Chair. I just, I just want to make a clarification. It's the site master plan that would be amended, not the comprehensive master plan. And it could be done concurrently as they go through the process. But since the council had previously adopted a layout for the entire site, that's the master plan of the site that would need to be amended.
You're saying that he's gonna try and do twenty-five, you're, it's under your control, he's gonna do twenty-five to thirty-eight a year? You know, one of the things that a lot of very fast-growing organizations have found out that you can grow too fast and-
Well, he's very concerned about that. That's, that's our ultimate goal is to get to that number, it's probably going to take three or four years to get there.
I know when Tom Monahan started the Donald Peters, he almost went bankrupt because he went so fast that he outstripped his ability to service the places that he was building for.
Right. Well, there seems to be a lot of demand for these because everywhere he's gone, he just went to a show in Columbus, a wedding show, and he came away with two hundred and fifty, they're more than a letter of interest, I guess. And now he's looking at us saying, when can we start construction? So, and that's, that's not to say that wouldn't happen everywhere, but clearly, it's, it's a lot of places it is difficult to find it, just a personal event center. But most companies, they, you know, they have conference rooms, but a lot of them, when they come to these facilities, they keep coming back. They have a lot of repeat customers.
The other thing I think that's important too is they don't, they don't want to open up a facility, you know, in one town and then the next town over. They like to be a minimum of ten miles from an existing facility so they can draw from that area.
Okay.
So, you know, when it's talking about twenty-five a year, you know, we're talking about the major metropolitan cities in the country.
I enjoyed with the Mr. Cyber that it sounds to me like it's a good thing to bring it down.
All right, Mr. Spencer, do you have another?
One quick question. How do you handle liquor license?
There, there is no liquor license, you know, they don't, they don't have one. So you basically hire a bar bartender, similar to like, if you have a wedding-
You're not selling liquor, you're giving it away.
Well, there's a company that has a license that travels with it, would come into the facility and you'd be basi, basically paying for private dining services.
Wedding receptions.
I've got one question. How would one gain access to the site in the interest of the client?
Well, the developers got a conceptual plan for a building here and the, we've just done some real conceptual site layouts. We've got, there's an access drive that goes out here and then we kind of connect through the parking of this facility over this drive, I think, that goes out to. I know that, well, actually, this is a private drive. No, we connect over here. Sorry.
If I may, at the moment, there's a driveway here that comes into the existing hotel site. So the proposal, at least the way I understand it, was to actually put a driveway along the existing parking lot with the hotel and then come into the property here and also have a cross connection between the hotel property and this one. So they would not have to go back and forth on this driveway, they can actually have a connection right to the hotel.
Well, thank you very much and we can't give you a consensus, but if you've got a thousand bases around the table.
Thank you.
Yes, it is.
Okay, the next item is Mr. Poe, and that's his inner special assessment renewal. And you're gonna have some special notes.
Our current three-year special assessment is set to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen. And a little background, history, the original city center district was established in nineteen ninety-two and the very first special assessment was established in nineteen ninety-four at one cent per square foot of non-residential. And that initially was established to build the Central Park Boulevard Plaza, which is referred to as Civic Plaza, for the capital improvement and the maintenance and special events of that facility. In nineteen ninety-nine, the special assessment was renewed with an increase of one penny to two cents per square foot. And since nineteen ninety-nine, we've continued to collect two cents per square foot. And approximately every three years, we'll back to city council in reauthorization for the special assessment. Now, I did a little homework and found that inflation, according to the U.S. Consumer Index, has increased fifty-seven percent since nineteen ninety-four and over forty percent since nineteen ninety-nine. So we have, in essence, less than half a dollar for every dollar that was collected when it was originally established. In the last three years, the city center has a more fine-tuned, three-pronged approach to redevelopment for the attraction or retention of young professionals and tenants in the district. Prior to that, we have been funding approximately twelve E2B concerts a year at a tune of sixty to eighty thousand dollars. And our maintenance obligations for Central Park Boulevard were in the range of ten to fifteen thousand dollars. And, and for, for quite a while, that was, everybody was happy with, with that effort. But as we hit the two thousand and six with the economy, our office tendencies started to go down and dwindle and our per capita return on investment dwindled to, to the point where at some times, we were only receiving about twenty-five to fifty people, an event that was costing us at least five thousand dollars, an event. Working with the business development manager and listening to our corporate owners and property managers, we, we started focusing on marketing. We established a website, started using social media to increase the participation at our special events. And we continued to sponsor special events, but we, we wanted to reach more of an audience year-round as opposed to just in the summer. And we scaled back the E2B concerts to once a month. And we were able to increase participation to over, many times on a nice day, over two hundred people per event. And then we partnered with other corporate businesses and have sponsored road races and art events and other special events. The second thing that we focused on was economic development. We hired Bob Gibbs, as you know, who came and presented to the council a marketing study. We've engaged other professionals to come up with long-term planning, envisioning for redevelopment strategies in the district. And the third thing has been concentration on placemaking. We want to be more of a pedestrian-friendly community and we found that we had a lot of gaps in our sidewalk system and our pathway system. So we, we've been focusing on some of the fundamentals, filling in the gaps where they didn't exist, providing decorative crosswalks, improving our transit shelters and transit stops, providing respite stations for pedestrians, benches, trash recovers and bike racks, and making a stronger connection with Lawrence Tech. Three years ago, Lawrence Tech petitioned us to expand the district and include them. And they've been partners with trying to build this town-in-gown concept. And we used some of the money that had been built up in our reserve funds to, to make a concentrated effort on capital improvements and the things that I talked about. And so going forward, we're finally seeing the signs that we're coming out of this recession and we're moving forward. And our businesses have also seen the value of how this money has been leveraged to bring in additional funding, anywhere from three to one, up to seven to one dollars. For every dollar we invest, we've been able to gather up to seven dollars in private or public grant investment. And our board recently met and made a recommendation to the city council. They're recommending that we increase our special assessment to three cents in the first year of our three-year assessment. So for two thousand and fifteen, fourteen, fifteen, which would begin July first, they're making a recommendation to increase to three cents per square foot. In year two, two thousand and fourteen, excuse me, two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, to increase to four cents per square foot. And then in year three, two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and seventeen, to increase to five cents per square foot. Every penny generates approximately sixty to sixty-five thousand dollars of, of income that we can reinvest. We want to partner, and I say we, speaking on behalf of the city center, with the city on Evergreen Road improvement. And we have allocated between thirty and forty thousand dollars for the additional maintenance of, of the boulevard, especially between the roundabouts. So we feel that we need at least a penny to meet our current obligations of maintenance with, with our additional obligations once City, uh, Evergreen Road has been completed. And then we would like some additional funding toward, to, to expand the marketing and the economic development and to continue with the capital improvement. With the opportunity that Evergreen gives us with new wayfinding signage, we want to continue that throughout the district. We have, we've prepared a non-motorized transit plan. There are a number of areas along Northwestern Highway where we could possibly install bike planes and then again, tie in with Lawrence Tech University. And the mission has been, they see the value in the potential increase. We're also being cognizant that we're coming out of recession, so we propose a gradual increase. But they, but they want to continue the good work that's, that's been done. So in the past, this is a three-step process. We'd like to come before council on March seventeenth for you to adopt resolutions one and two, which establishes the renewal and directs the city assessor to start preparing the rolls. And then in May, we would come back where the, the council would authorize moving forward and setting a public hearing, to come back finally on June sixteenth, have the final public hearing and hopefully the adoption, so that the new assessment would take place on July first. And we've had several new owners from out of state who have bought in the Travelers Tower Complex is one in particular. You will be seeing some major investment. They're proposing nineteen thousand square foot out parcel building. They have said to the site planning committee earlier today that they're investing over ten million dollars in their existing facilities. And they see the value in this district. It helps with them to attract and retain tenants. They're about fifty percent occupied, but they feel confident that- They're about 50% occupied, but they feel confident that with some reinvestment and repurposing of their existing facility and building this out parcel development to help further service the needs that have been identified by their existing tenants, that they'll grow into that 100% capacity. And we're hearing the same thing from some of the newer property owners in the district. So we think it's a good time now to approach after 15 years, an increase over a gradual three-year period, because we know how difficult it is. We've only done this once in the last 15 years as far as an increase. And we want to position ourselves well in the future to continue partnering with the city, partnering with Lawrence Tech and partnering with some of the private businesses to create that vibrant sense of place that we all have been talking about. So tonight is just an introduction. We have a schedule in your packet of what we hope to come back to council for, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have at this time.
Mr. Zorn.
Yeah, one question. I'm not again, this is a little session, but how much would an amount of?
Okay, we're currently collecting around $130,000 to $35,000 and that's for two cents. Each additional cent would generate about $60,000. So the first year, we would go from $130,000 to $190,000, $240,000, $300,000.
Tell me, where does that assessment come from?
Each property owner voluntarily pays whatever percentage.
Voluntarily?
Yeah, they do. Once they.
And if they don't, volunteer to pay, what happens?
Well, if more than 60% of the property owners sign on, or no less, no more than 40% disagree, the assessment gets placed on all property owners.
But they've given the opportunity to say yes or no.
That's why you have two public hearings, yes. And we have been doing this since 1994 and we send out the assessments and for the most part, 90% of them get paid right away. Sometimes it's property owners' turnover. In the event that they don't pay, they get put on the tax roll. But we, for the most part, have had good cooperation with them voluntarily paying without us having to.
You're talking about the private residences included?
No, residents do not have to pay anything. This is non-residential. So anything that is not residential.
You should say that.
Would pay. Sorry, I thought I said that in the beginning, but it's not for residents. Residents just benefit from it, but they don't have to pay anything into it. And really, this is, the legislation came as part of a principal shopping district, which helps us leverage potential other funding sources and give us a higher score if we were to apply for any grants.
And that comes from all the businesses, the little businesses, the big ones?
That's right, but it's all done proportionate based on their square footage.
Do you have a question? So this evening, Mr. Zorn is looking for a conference to move forward with the proposed special assessment. So we'll go around the table, we'll start with you, Mr. Fronk.
Yes.
And you have more, Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
And I have to ask you.
Yes.
Can I say yes?
Thank you. So on March 17th, we'll have Resolutions One and Two, and then that will establish the process. And in the course of the next three months, there'll be two more steps after that, including the public hearing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let me come to the next item we're going to have, Mr. Zorn and Mr. Zorn, this is the Valley Woods Senior Campus Community revitalization.
If I may, on February 14th, the Southfield Nonprofit submitted two applications. This is one of the applications that was submitted to MISHDA for the Tax Credit Project. The presentation you're about to see is incorporated within this proposal. The Valley Woods Senior Campus is an assemblage of different planning products that existed within the city, Parks and Rec, the Southfield Nonprofit, the owners of McDonald Towers and River Park Place, they have been doing this, they have, since the mid-'90s, have been assembling the property to the north. Thought it was appropriate that council see this concept plan. It has been submitted within the MISHDA application. As part of the scoring process for the MISHDA application, there were points if the application were part of a larger regional plan. We worked with the Planning Department, Recreation Department and Engineering Department in assembling this plan. The Southfield Nonprofit retained a landscape architect to do some concepts. I want to stress that this is a conceptual plan. This plan document in the scoring process is worth an extra 10 points in the application. The application is given five points. And in doing this, I just want to really stress that we really pulled together a lot of the historic documents. There were boxes from the nonprofit, from Don Grosser, City Administrator, with a block was here of these parcels that had been assembled, different dialogues with HUD, MISHDA, different state and federal agencies. And the Planning Department took the lead in putting this together, working again with Parks and Rec, Engineering, as well as planning together with private landscape architect. I really wanted council to see it. The other thing is, this is a sub-area plan, that within the plan, we indicate that we will take this through a sub-area planning process and ask that the city adopt it as a conceptual plan.
Let's go to the presentation first, Mr. Zorn, and then you have your end question.
Thank you. I'm just gonna, I want to just share a few quotes and statistics as background, so you can see where we're coming from. Today, a majority of households are people, young or old, living alone. Couples are sets of unrelated individuals of various ethnicities, ages and tastes. Growing number of elderly requiring less dwelling space, but more living assistance, and single low-income parents struggling to support dependent children or perhaps a dependent adult. The traditional family unit of a married husband and wife and two, three kids is now a minority in America. About 25% of new households prefer condos and urban townhomes. Moreover, the majority of young adults and seniors prefer living in walkable neighborhoods and sustainably designed communities characterized by diverse land uses and a broad array of civic amenities. By 2020, there will be around 35 million over 65 households in the U.S. Many seniors who would like to become renters will be trying to sell about 200,000 more owner-occupied homes than there will be new households entering the market to buy them. Southfield already has a higher proportion of residents in the 65 and older age group than Oakland County, Metro Detroit and the state of Michigan. According to the U.S. Census in 2010, Southfield had the largest retirement population at 16.7%, and that is expected to grow to close to 25% of our population by 2040. Providing appropriate senior housing options is increasingly important as the general population age. And the key is to provide continuum of care, independent living options, apartment-style units, assisted living, and finally institutional options for the later stages of life. So giving all those demographics and housing choices, this is how we approached this project. And the target area, as Mr. Zorn had indicated, is the McDonald Tower and River Park Place properties that are located here on Central Civic Center Drive and Berg Road adjacent to Telegraph Road. The existing McDonald Towers has about 5.73 acres, River Park Place, 8.72 acres. And when I talked about other amenities in the area, we've got the Rouge Greenway Corridor or Valley Woods Park that equates over 28 acres just in this area. Wetlands Restoration Area here at over 20 acres. And then we have the Berg measuring close to eight acres. And then we looked at this area north of the existing facilities for possible expansion. The site also is ideal because it's along two existing bus routes and in a bike path. Other amenities in the city to help support people aging in place, they might need to downsize from their homes, but they want to stay in the same community where they go to church, where they have a social network or a family network. They just need different housing options. And especially having, being able to keep the same doctors and other support services. So this map shows existing daycare, adult daycare facilities, hospitals, urgent care, senior centers, surgical centers and other senior support facilities, including our fire stations. Also, this radius is about approximately one mile. Within the one-mile radius, there are over 16 different restaurants and retail opportunities to support seniors who want to get out. And then finally, the site is ideally located within our green space and recreation areas to promote active living. And that includes green infrastructure, healthy living opportunities include improved air and water quality, trail network, heart-healthy activities, wayfinding signage, opportunities for art and sculpture, passive recreation. There's also many economic benefits of the greenways and ultimately to reduce healthcare costs. So we're well-positioned with the project location. Since 1988, the not-for-profit housing in the city have been slowly acquiring properties to the north as they become available on the market. And this area, if we look at all the single lots north of McDonald Towers and River Park Place, there are approximately 30 separate tax parcels, of which the city and the not-for-profit control 19 of those properties at a cost of $2 million since 1988 as they became available on the market. And most of those are adjacent to Hooper, so there's room to grow. If we look long-term, there are 11 private parcels with a total cash value of $525,000. So if the city and the not-for-profit continue to pick them up as the market allows, we now control over 60% of the parcels in the area. So we looked at all the things that I've been talking about for the last few minutes and if we were to truly provide a continuum of care, what would that look like? One, it would have extensive open space and trail networks connecting the Rouge Corridor to the Berg Park and opportunities for sculpture, art elements and respite stations. It would include a variety of housing units. This is based on our current zoning density for 18 acres. We were able to control all the site. 154 fourplex independent senior housing units. These are one-level flats at 840 square feet each. 77 fourplex independent senior housing units. These are two-level townhomes at 1,680 square feet each. And one of the things that we heard in our study is that the existing senior center tends to have a sense of ownership by the current occupants of the towers. And people coming from outside of that complex to use it feel a little bit intimidated when they do use it. So what we looked at was if we were to build an independent freestanding senior center, what would that potentially look like? And we surveyed other communities of similar size and similar demographics and we came up with a footprint of approximately 30,000 square feet. I think Mr. Frazier mentioned at the last council meeting the need for additional parking. So we incorporated an expanded parking area that can be shared between the proposed senior center and the existing River Park Place with a new dedicated entrance way into all of the facilities. These are trail networks, green space for some stormwater mitigation and a variety of independent living with the main focus of the senior center and then connectivity to the existing Berg Park and the Rouge Corridor. And these are, this is actually a photo of the senior complex that we based our study on with some other pictures of the independent living. And here is that footprint that needs further study and could include outdoor amenities such as both an indoor and outdoor pool. But it does provide dining opportunities, multipurpose room, kitchen, art, billiards, ceramics, crafts, a library, TV and music room, a fitness center and multipurpose classrooms with a drop-off area. And this is the 30,000-square-foot concept that we came out based on our current and future population needs. We also wanted to take this plan one step further and look at greater density. And using the MISHDA model of both a mid-rise and a high-rise residential units, we were to incorporate with the independent living units, a mid-rise that could house potentially 140 additional units at six levels, a high-rise at 12 stories that could accommodate 185 additional units. Here's an example of the high-rise, here's an example of the mid-rise. Incorporate stormwater features. So these would be ponds that had a small waterfall feature that would provide both active and passive recreation and satisfy some of our larger regional stormwater management so that, as Mr. Zorn had talked about, possibly developers could put money into a pool of funds that we could use to leverage for additional grants. This also includes, the stormwater mitigation is really daylighting the existing Hooper drain, which is now just all piped underground and then just flowing with no impediments right into our river. Creating a small kayak drop-off area, people could put in a 12-mile, float down to this area or put in here and float down to 10-mile, but it would provide additional recreation opportunities. And this was lifted from the current Parks and Recreation Master Plan and altered. We also looked at mixed-use development, possibility of some shops, cafe, possibly even a restaurant with an overlook deck into the green space. And then if parking became such a need, we could possibly build a future deck parking at 100 spaces per floor and go up a couple stories. So the high-rise would be located here, the mid-rise here, and this would be a variety of both townhomes and two-story flats for active independent seniors with the assisted living facilities within close walking proximity. And because our McDonald Towers and River Park Place already meet our low-income thresholds, all of this could be built at market rate. So we could partner with a private developer and leverage some of our stormwater and our Parks and Recreation and other development funds to help make this work. This is very conceptual for illustrative purposes only, but this was our best attempt utilizing our existing plans, getting some feedback from staff, looking at our demographic needs long-range. And as Mr. Zorn said, we'd like to incorporate this as part of our master plan process, adopt it as a sub-area plan. And so what we're looking for tonight is, this is a starting point. If there's consensus from the council to direct it back through the Planning Commission, we would hold a public hearing and input, the plan and actually having a meeting out here at the facility. And then by May, bring it back to council for adoption to meet our funding deadlines and responsibilities as part of this grant. So with that quick overview, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I've got some details of the park plans if you need some.
Mr. Zorn. Okay. I was dreaming for a little while. This is a dream that this inception will take. Oh, I know, before I say anything else, we have to get a hold of a couple of almanacs to fund this dream, like the funding for Lawrence Tech. This is all a dream.
Well, it is a long-term vision.
Well, it is a long-term vision. But it does allow us, one, to continue with our strategy of acquisition as it became available. But more importantly, should someone come in with a development that's not consistent with this plan and the council has adopted this as a plan?
Terry, I'm going to ask the comments in the audience, be nill. You don't need any echoes or daisies, or you'll be asked to leave this meeting.
So one of the purposes is to help us leverage additional funding. But we want to look long-term as we do in all of our planning documents so that we, when opportunities do come available for funding, we have a plan in place that the funding agencies say, yes, this has been adopted and endorsed by the city. Second, if there is a proposal that is not to our liking, for example, we had that scramble about a landfill at a certain site. We never had a plan in place to really quantify and say, this is not appropriate in this location. This helps us to do that. And thirdly, we know that our demographics are changing and we need to reposition ourselves as a suburban first-rate community. We have too many large lot, single-family homes. And this helps us get to, get to a place where it can be concentrated in an area that has all these assets available to us. So when you say how long, I always like to say ten to twenty years, could be developed. If we gain control of a few more properties, there might be enough synergy to go out and purchase or other means, assemble the rest of the property, and start looking for developers who know that they can build this at market rate, just like that banquet facility, there's a market available, we identify it, and we use this plan to go out and seek development to partner with, with the housing authority.
Where does all the funding come from?
Various sources. And Mr. Zorn can maybe jump in on what particular funding we're going for now and other opportunities. But at some point, we will bring in a private, be a private-public partnership.
Okay. The applications we have submitted are for nine percent tax credit applications. We'll no-nay whether or not we've been successful in funding by the end of May. That will accomplish?
From?
From MISHDA and primarily the federal government in the form of a tax credit. That will accomplish the following for McDonald Towers and River Park Place, to preserve affordability on the existing units. It will give us, based on the model that we've developed, a renovation budget of about thirty-four thousand per unit. And when the deal is finalized, a year from now, the nonprofit will be sitting on roughly ten to eleven million dollars. I am convinced that if we had, if we controlled the rest of the land, there are enough partners today who'd want, from faith-based organizations, Presbyterian homes, to, there are a lot of groups that would love to partner. And the model on this would be on a per-unit basis, we would pay the equivalent of, because we own the land, the equivalent of what would be an impact fee to help us with the overall development of the senior center. Every time a unit's built, there'll be a capital contribution into the senior center. If our, if the plan includes a parking deck, there'd be a fee paid for that. So every time a unit is developed, there'll be a block of money going in to help capitalize the senior center, parking structure, and then to pay for the infrastructure itself. So I could think of, you know, it'll be very, in my mind, this is a very passion-driven project. The nonprofit has been working on this since the eighties. It shows a very strong purpose relative to housing and is very driven. And this, you know, and I really want to stress why I wanted this shown tonight, because I know some folks are going to be in Lansing the next couple of weeks. And this application is being circulated by the, by people at the state who will be reviewing the application. And I, council needed to know that this document is out there and that we're going through a planning process also with this because someone from MISHDA, Michigan Economic Development Corporation, from Treasury, these are our folks who review these applications, could offer to any one of you. And I think it's important that you're all aware of it.
How does it affect the taxpayers in New York? Not connected to the, to our, yeah.
Well, I think you have to put value on the connection to McDonald and River Park Place, that you're preserving affordability and getting to that level of renovation. To the rest, and I think that, I think that's important to a community that obviously built the facility and made that investment. To the rest of the community, the senior center would be an activity center open to others. And then depending upon the ultimate structure that, that how these somebody may be a private developer building them, they may be on the tax rolls paying two thousand, twenty-five hundred dollars a year in taxes. There could be a number of ways that there's new tax revenues coming to the city. But I think the-
I think they're dreaming that, too. I ask, how would it affect the wide range of taxpayers who live in their own residences who pay the cost of paying the taxes? So how big could it involve it? Yes, there will be people who benefit it who will get into these projects, but not ten thousand people who will not be able to get into it. Or all the rest of the, all the rest of the poor housing, the minority housing, the low class, the low, the low properties, what could happen to that?
I, I think the best thing we could do for Southfield and any community is to continue to grow the community, grow appreciation, and grow value for people. For most of us, our wealth is concentrated in our home regardless of your income. It'll all go up in value.
Yeah, the individuals that are living okay, they're earning the money to live okay.
It's not going to pay, it's not going to pay their tax bill or their mortgage, but it may help their property values go up in appreciation.
I could jump in from the nonprofit.
I've been on the nonprofit a couple of years.
Yeah, I know, Sid. But this is, if we didn't refinance, we would have lost the subsidy. We could, you know, the nonprofit could have taken the money that's in the bank, the seven million dollars in capital funds, and paid off the mortgage. If it had done that, the subsidy for River Park Place and McDonald Towers would have disappeared. They force you, if you want to keep the HUD or the MISHDA subsidy to, so it's very affordable housing, as you know, you have to refinance. Through refinancing, as Fred said, the nonprofit will come into about eleven million dollars that could be the jumpstart financing-
That's not my question that I was asking.
But I'm getting there, just let me finish.
Go ahead.
It will actually expand the number of units for people who need subsidized housing for, for the fifty-five and up demographic, people that, you know, maybe don't have a retirement nest egg. So this is, this is, we have an aging population here. This is a, a project that could actually help more people than are currently being served. And I'd also add, without any advertising, there are no vacancies, other than ones that are being rehabbed, there are no vacancies in the three buildings. So there is demand for, for the housing that's in the three subsidized housing buildings.
I think, Mr. Lance, what can we, how, how, what can we do for homeowners that have a tax bill, that may, senior homeowners that may have a tax bill that may not be-
Do nothing, do nothing. There'll be more people coming in for subsidized housing. There will be always people coming in. We have, how many people, what's the population, sixty-three thousand?
Seventy-two thousand.
Seventy, so you're not going to, to have seventy-two thousand people in subsidized housing and all that. I'm talking about the people who are not qualified for these, section eight or that. We're not talking about that. We could take care of that. I'm asking, but the money-
Again, the best thing we could do for-
The money will, will be getting in, the funding, everything else will not benefit the rest of the low-income people, the kids who don't live in the subsidized housing. That's what I want to know.
The best thing you could do for, for anyone in that situation is continue to drive their value and help them create wealth. That's about all-
Oh, you know you're dreaming that, too. To create wealth? Come on, look what's happening out there.
When your property appreciates, which, which normally happens, you know-
But that doesn't take care of all the lower, the low-income people. I'm asking that question. I know we can take care of a certain amount of subsidized housing. Okay, we can do that. But I see, I see hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people who are suffering out there. That's what I'm talking about. You shake your head, I shake my head.
Let me try to answer that.
I want to know where the funding will come from for this. The other people will not do it.
Well, I think they explained where the funding would come for this. How a person who is in a home today and, and has problem, danger bills, you know, we don't have, local government does not have anything to address that. And that's really the problem.
I know that. We know that, but that's not answering my question.
So you take, so you try to take care of as many as you can by finding whatever tools you have available.
Impossible. You know that. I'm not talking about that.
This is, this is an example of, of dealing with some of the people.
I know that.
And what Fred was saying-
I'm not talking about-
What Fred is saying is, is what happens to those who are here and of need, you know, they would get more for their homes if we, homes appreciated. And they could then move into these homes and sell their homes. They won't be underwater. In other words, the real thing here-
That's also long range.
Well, everything's long. We don't, we're going to get the money to-
So I'm asking, where are you going to plan in this plan? Where are you going to get all the, all the funding? From MISHDA, or MISHDA, or?
Oh, you know, that's the government.
And that only helps a selected few people, or a few, I mean thousands.
This plan is, is not going to help everybody. It's not going to help everybody. May, if we're successful, make a senior center that you currently don't have today, that every resident who's a senior could enjoy. But the funding will come from collaborative partnerships, that it may be private.
I know that. I know that, and that's all good. That's still not answering my question.
You can't help everybody, so you got to help as many as you can.
Okay, I can't get answers here. I know that. It's a, it's a long dream. It's good. It's beautiful. It's nice. For a hundred years, Terry, not, not ten or twenty. On a session, there's no, the, the, all right, the McDonald, the management, that, that time, when, when the old guys were there, you know, old guys, not me, I didn't talk about the other guys, they had five million dollars in there and they didn't spend a penny to years. They didn't better the rooms or the, nothing, nothing. They gave out bonuses of ten thousand dollars for the management.
It's changed, yeah.
I know it's changed. I know it's changed. But the, the average person out there cannot afford the taxes they're paying and the bills. How can we help them?
Well, you know, let me ask you one more. Housing itself in particular, the values have gone down substantially.
You know, we're buying those houses. You know, we're buying those houses.
I'm trying to ask you a question.
Speculators.
I'm trying to ask you a question.
Top money.
They're paying less taxes because of the values right now.
Yeah, but I'm telling you, there's more speculators that bought those, bought those houses than people.
Yeah, well, you have the money to buy them, so.
The people are still suffering. They can't even rent in those houses. You know what they're getting for that? The speculators' houses?
Twelve hundred.
A thousand, twelve hundred?
Yeah, no.
On, 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 on Everett and all that, with those, the deteriorating houses are being, being rented out for a thousand dollars a month to people who can't afford it. You know what's happening out there?
No, nobody knows.
All right, council, let's have, let's direct our questions to the next one. That's true. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, if this was a plan that hurt the people who are struggling now at the expense for, you know, a plan in the future, I wouldn't support it. But, you know, this is monies, grant applications that, you know, does it say?
No.
No, but I'm just saying in general, you know, this is, we can't solve all the economic problems, but this is kind of taking a stab at something where our housing demographics going forward-
When is it going to take?
Well, let me tell you, our housing demographics going forward-
What is the plan?
And our population demographics going forward, there's something that's not in sync. And I'm going to tell you a phrase that I heard, it was a saying, it's kind of a Frazierism, but I don't think I heard it from Myron. It's the best time-
It's a big favorite.
Frazierism, I coined that. It's the best time to plant a tree was twenty years ago. The second-best time to plant a tree is now. And if we don't, you know, make some sort of movement to solve a problem that's going to happen in twenty years ago, I'm going to look back and say, why didn't we address it at the time?
I don't disagree with you. I'm not disagreeing.
Okay.
I asked, I asked for another problem and we can't, I can't get an answer.
I don't think there is an answer.
Well, we're sitting here, we're supposed to be clever, experienced.
What is your answer? What's your answer?
Oh, I have an answer.
What is it?
Okay, Mr. Frazier, I don't want to get into a debate.
I can give an answer.
Well, no matter what we say, it's not the right answer.
So, so let's not debate the issue. Do you have a question?
I'm asking the public officials to answer that, not me. I have been doing my duty in helping people.
Okay, Mr. Lance, we, we, I think the question that you asked, Mr. Frazier.
Well, I just think that this thing has been, you know, started some time ago, and I think that this is really a great program, and I think we really have to go forward with it. I think the time is right. The money may be available to go forward with it. The price of the homes are, the price where it could be purchased to expand wherever we're at, at this time. So I think it's a great program, great, great project, and I think whatever we can do to make it move quicker, we should do.
Thank you. Fred, does the building belong, what is that?
McAdams?
Yeah, McAdams. There's a-
Through the, through the chair, this, this one here?
Something is there now?
No.
Proposed.
It's conceptual.
That's proposed?
Yes.
All right, conceptual. It doesn't exist.
It's two to four stories.
So everything is in white?
Is proposed.
The one, what about the, is that McDonald Towers, the one there?
Right here.
Okay, so everything up there on the green?
It's all conceptual.
That's all conceptual. I'm some believer in feet on the ground now, I want to see it before I make a comment. I mean, I, I know we've talked about developing, doing the development there and the senior center and all that, but the overall concept's in a favor of it in terms of what actually we do, in terms of what we actually do because of the environmental sensitivity, I want to, I see it, I want to see it.
That's true. It's what I'm thinking. Mr. Frazier, if you want to go back to that.
Yeah, one of the things that I think is a risk is when the folks that own the property now see what our plans are, the cost of the property is going to go up unless we go through eminent domain, and I don't know if that's, if that would be an option or not.
It would be an option, obviously, it's more expensive.
It would be our last option, probably.
Because then you have relocation that goes along with it, so.
At least, you know, you have to have some conceptual plan. And we are clear to say that this is illustrative for discussion purposes only. One of the recommendations is to continue to purchase property as they become available on the market. So there's no aggressive strategy at, at this point. But there might be at some point, when you control ninety percent of the property, that if there's two or three additional pieces, that you, you might end, end up doing, doing one of those routes.
How many years that'll take?
One of the things in the mile radius type of thing was there are no, there are no grocery stores. And that might be something that gets put on the list of things to include in here because we have a bunch of, a group of seniors that, and you're concerned about that one-mile radius. Everybody has to eat there. So that's one thing. The other thing is, I know for the senior center, then, it's always been a high priority for the seniors that we've talked to about having a zero-depth pool. about having a zero depth pool. So that's something that needs to be in the back of your mind as you lay out the footprint.
Right, and I think, I mentioned because that was brought up before, it's not in this concept, but a possible indoor/outdoor pool.
Right.
And again, some of this feedback, when we take it through the process, that's the kind of neighborhood responses that we can incorporate into the plan.
And I know this is all concept, it's just marks on a piece of paper right now, but I don't think I'd put the music room and the TV room side by side.
And again, this is based on something that's already been built as a starting point.
Right.
What we would need to do, as I mentioned, is a real detailed study on our needs. This is, actually, this is the facility that we took the footprint from. So what might work there might not work here.
Yeah, I do support acquiring without the emergency care that becomes available. While we end up doing there, I'm going to have some major concerns.
All right, you're looking for consensus tonight.
And direction to take it back through the planning commission process.
So we can, I look for consensus tonight to prove that we have some sort of...
For the adoption of the sub-area plan. And it will come back to the council in two months. You'll have a chance to really adopt it, but it's just about taking the starting point and moving it through the process.
Is this bringing it into the master plan, is that the idea?
That's what we would do, is incorporate it as a sub-area plan.
That's why, that's why we want a decision on the sub areas to clarify the master plan.
That's correct. And there's the sensitivity to the timing so that we can bring it, to take advantage of the grant.
Yeah, just one quick question. This is really a defensive move to protect the property in case we want to move forward, in case somebody else comes in and says, I got all this...
That's what I said, it's both an offensive and a defensive plan.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Okay, Mr. Patinkin.
Yes.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the Economic Development Initiative.
Yeah, if you'd like me to, Madam President. In the, at the January thirty first meeting of the Economic Development meeting, in the city's continued efforts to be redevelopment ready, one of the recommendations was the concept of creating the entire city as a 198 district. And prior to staff moving through the full process, we wanted the city to engage with the appetite of council was relative to a concept of creating the entire city as an Act 198 district. Most of you will recall from the various tax abatements we've given pursuant to Public Act 328, the first step is establishing the 198 district. So this would, in essence, again, under, you know, the concept of being redevelopment ready and open for business, work towards elimination of that first step because the entire city would be declared a district. And again, before staff does a lot of work on this, we just want to see if it's something that is, that council's open to.
I mean, there would be certain parameters that we would need to make sure that we meet under the statute. So I think it is kind of preliminary to see if we can even get to that stuff, but is council interested in doing that?
And in essence, we would streamline the process, eliminating one step on the way through.
Okay, Council. Hi, this is a question. If you're down, if I can...
I haven't been able to... No, it's, in my mind, I equate this to some communities have elected that the entire city is eligible to adopt the Brownfield Plan. And in this, we're in essence saying that if your property is eligible pursuant to state statute and approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury, that you would be able to apply for either a 198 tax abatement if your land use is eligible and you are eligible under state law, or a abatement on a personal property pursuant to 328. And that applies to a lot of our commercial office users.
So there's an if, if it was...
Anytime we do a tax abatement, it is always subject to the Michigan Department.
Yeah, I understand, but you're talking about being citywide. So the condition, I mean, the thing that would affect it of the final decision is would it qualify otherwise?
Right, you would need to meet the parameters of the statute.
Three, for each?
Well, if the district is going to be citywide, then you'd have to be able to show at least initially that fifty percent of the properties within the district, commercial, the industrial properties, as defined by the statute, are obsolete. You have to be able to meet the threshold, or you can't create the 198.
Well, so what happened to the areas that are, don't meet that? We're making it citywide.
Well, at least fifty percent, at least fifty percent have to meet that threshold.
That's what I'm asking. Fifty percent have to meet it in order to make it citywide. So what does it have, what does it do to the other fifty percent? Does it have any effect on them? It does not, okay. Okay, that's what I want to know.
Yeah, I'd say that it's a tool that is available to cities that would spur development, and I think that's very important for Southfield, to have that kind of a tool. And it sends a message out to everyone else that we're open for business and, you know, we need to do some drastic things in order to get people back in town doing things. And you've seen a couple tonight, you know, and they should feel good to get the four or five now coming in. And I think we've turned the corner a little bit, but this also is an additional challenge.
Anyone else? I've got a few minutes, but I have something else to tell you. There are many, many condos now owned by private people, private speculators. And they were getting eleven hundred, eleven fifty. Now, last month, they're raising rents, two hundred to three hundred dollars for those people. And you should see those condos, they're now worth seven hundred, eight hundred. That's what's happening out there. None of us can do anything, because I'm telling you what is happening out there for people.
We appreciate your comments, Mr. Lantz, but we have moved to item number five on our agenda.
That's all right. I just want you to know, we are on item number five.
Any other questions?
Okay, we'll take a big difference at this point.
Yeah. Yes.
I think this is a pretty creative idea, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, okay, great. All right.
Thank you. Council, in two thousand and seven, the city of Southfield entered into an interlocal agreement with Oakland County for the solid layout and programming services. The contract at that time, it provided for the solid layout and programming, you know, the cost of two hundred dollars for each election. The contract has expired, and the county has yet that week. Contract with them again for the next five years. They have not increased their prices. And we very happy with the services. We recommend that your honorable body approve the local agreement as recommended. We're asking for a rule ten this evening because we are dating voters to the election season and we're trying to get all the interlocal agreements with the various communities. Thanks, you all.
Madam Chair, unless there's other people who want to join in on this item, I'll move rule ten.
Support.
We have a motion by Councilman Moss. supported by Councilman Moss for rule ten. All in favor?
Aye.
I am opposed.
Madam Chair, I move that we enter into a agreement with the county that includes the ballots as recommended by the city clerk.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Patinkin, supported by Mr. Fraser, to change the interlocal agreement for the solid layout and programming. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, I should say.
Thank you. The next item before you, Council, is a proposal numbers with the consolidation plan. As you remember, in June of two thousand and thirteen, I came before your honorable body for the recommendation to reduce the number precincts in Southfield from forty-three to thirty-six. That proposal went into effect January of two thousand and fourteen. While we were updating the street index and putting together the proposed map, we noticed that there was a small error in our proposed recommendation to council. I included a map in the document. If you look at precincts number twenty-one and twenty-two in the lower right-hand corner, where the lodge freeway is, we had the line going straight down. There's a few homes in the lower right-hand corner off the North Land Drive that are in the Oakland Street District in the upper quadrant of precinct twenty-two. It should be in the precinct twenty-one boundary. So we're recommending that ordinance be introduced to correct this minor change so we can move forward with creating our precincts.
Madam Chair, I move for a rule ten for the corrected items.
Support.
And we have some consistency in Southfield and Oak Park's districts.
We have a motion by Mr. Patinkin, supported by Mr. Lantz. Any questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move that the question the city clerk be approved to change the districts twenty-one, twenty-two, will be...
Support.
The boundary lines, yeah.
Right.
I said the boundary lines.
Boundary lines.
We have a motion by Councilman, the fact is supported by Councilman Moss. All in favor?
Aye.
I am opposed, motion opposed.
Thank you.
Do that need a...
Ask him if the industry can enact it tonight as an emergency order. So the ordinance will be fifteen twenty-two?
So move...
Or two? Fifteen twenty-two, of course.
It was moved by Councilman Fraser, he supported it.
The other way around, forgot to...
I supported it. I'm not going to take away my name, knowing the ordinance numbers.
Sorry.
A motion by Councilman Fraser, supported by Councilman Patinkin, to... And act ordinance, emergency ordinance, fifteen twenty-two. Any questions, all in favor?
Aye.
I am opposed, I should say. All right, we'll move to the communication intermotion of our agenda. And the first person is Michael Lindbergh. Our president, Mr. President. The first person is Pamela Gerald. We have five minutes for the record.
My name is Pamela Gerald, P O Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five. For the residents that need to contact me, I can be reached at two four eight three four six zero four three nine. As your independent voice, I am only a phone call away or a click away via email. I would also like to thank the residents for listening to these council meetings on YouTube. Several years ago, the U.S. Department of Justice found Denso and their parent company, Yazaki Corporation, guilty of price fixing and bid rigging and appropriately assessed a fine of seven hundred and fifty million for three quarters of a billion dollars. Denso came to Southfield later in the year and got another tax abatement from the city of Southfield. Denso has rode the gravy train in Southfield for almost twenty years at the expense of our roads and highway service drive. At that time, I said the city should be declared as an industrial development district under Public Act one ninety-eight of nineteen seventy-four. Citywide, in an effort to shorten the public hearings in the length of the council meetings. I am very pleased to see that this council, whether you admit it or not, respectfully took my recommendation to make this bold decision. I am sure this Economic Development Initiative was being discussed probably during the tenure of Councilman Cyberg over this council. And if so, Dr. Cyberg, I'd like to thank you for that and to thank this council for finally stepping up to the plate on this matter. As a best practice, I approve of the city YPA one ninety-eight. And don't give me any credit, council, you did this. Councilman Moss, thank you. You showed me that you are intellectually curious enough to ask for the amount of jobs expected to be generated for the last tax abatement and whether or not, in fact, they had used the Southfield Works Program at the John Gray Center. I challenge you to inquire a bit further to establish the following, if possible. Number one, how many additional monies have been generated as a result of all the tax abatements given since the nineties, when they started here in Southfield? Number two, how many jobs have been generated and maintained during and after the abatement have ended? Number three, for any jobs that were created, that is, if they were in fact created, how many applicants came from the John Gray Center? And number four, did our restaurants here in Southfield generate additional revenue purported by Shelley Freeman over the years? And if not, how many restaurants have closed in Southfield in the last twenty years, even with all those tax abatements? Councilman Moss, Shelley Freeman may or may not be qualified to obtain this data. If possible, I would like to see a council committee established or officially recognize our Citizens Oversight Committee to gather this data for you, to present it to this council. Remember, council, a city is only as strong as its public safety and interested constituents. And Ms. Sue Ward, I trust that you will work out all these ramifications to make this citywide district happen. Thank you very much.
Unofficially. Okay, the next person is Mr. Harmon Spencer.
I'm Harmon Spencer, one nine one one, Greenspruce, Southfield, Michigan. I'm president of the Grand Village Homeowners Association. And in that capacity, I tend to look out for all of my neighbors. On February fourth, zoning board of appeals took a vote on the waivers for Jonas Development as part of the setback is concerned. I questioned the setback at that time and found out later on that we are able to revisit if we come up with new information. I have looked over their plans and part of their, on page G zero one, the setbacks adjacent to residential zone RA, with their calculations, is ninety-eight point seventy-eight feet. Unfortunately, that might be from the resident's back wall to the front wall of the building. Our ordinances state the setback is supposed to be from the fence line, from the property line, not from the back wall of the house. So taking that into consideration, you're going to have a three-story building fifty feet away from the resident's back, but that's a window. Our residents, there's, Mr. Crowe said, what's the big deal, there's only five. You know, he's shoving them under the truck. You know, I am concerned about our residents, several of which are non-English speaking people. I called Mike Manda to get a translator here to help out with this process. The gentleman happens to be Armenian, Nancy Banks. So we have concerns that these people were taken advantage of because of their inability to read the language and to speak the language. because of their inability to read the language and to speak the language. There was no effort made to contact these people before the February fourth meeting, before the vote was taken, to see if they understood what was being said. Thank you.
Uh, the next person is Stephanie English.
Good evening. My name is Connie Jones. I live one twenty-nine, one twenty-two, one thirty Guy Street.
Can you speak to the line?
Oh, sorry. I live on Guy Street. I received this letter today, which I do not understand. Not embarrassed to say, I'm a very poor reader and understand that. If it had not been for Mrs. English to help me understand this, I knew nothing. I read it, but I still did not understand it. I'm asking that we could go back over this a little bit because I'm well retired, well senior years old, and I don't know if I, I know that I don't want three stories, someone looking right in my backyard, right in my family room, that's my family room, that's on the side of the house. So, I'm asking that we will be able, that council, the city of Southfield, will reconsider and let this be over and fully explained to myself and my other four neighbors down the street from me. Because I do not understand, and I don't think my neighbors understand either. So, if it is all possible, and I would hate to say that we would get an attorney or something to that effect, because I do not understand. That's my complaint tonight.
Somebody's gonna read the letter to us.
Pardon me?
Somebody's gonna read the letter to us.
Yeah, we're gonna have our attorney.
Would you like?
No, you don't have to read it.
Oh, have.
We're gonna have our attorney, Ms. Ward. She's gonna summarize what your letter states and what actions you can take when this council, Ms. Ward.
Thank you. So, so your letter was addressed to Mr. Gardella and Mr. Cumberford. That was dated February twenty-fifth. Basically, you indicated at that time that you wanted to object to the February fourth decision of the zoning board of appeals on the basis that you didn't understand what was happening at the time. And so, this letter came from Mr. Cumberford in response to your letter. And what it tries to do is let you know how the law looks at the circumstance that we're in right now. The, all of the property owners within three hundred feet were notified of the zoning board of appeals hearing on February fourth. They were all notified that that matter would come before the zoning board. They had a right to come to speak at the, at the hearing, the public hearing. And at the time, it was my understanding that only two people spoke at the zoning board of appeals. That would be Ms. English and Mr. Gunther. Based on the discussion and the request that was made for the variance and the discussion by the zoning board of appeals members, based on the evidence submitted at that hearing, the zoning board made a decision to allow that, that variance, that waiver. The law now provides that once the zoning board acts, that that is a final decision. The council has no power to now go and take back what the zoning board of appeals has done. That's a final decision. The law provides, though, that a person that's, that is aggrieved by a decision of the zoning board of appeals has the right to appeal to circuit court. And a judge will now look at the record that was before the zoning board of appeals and determine whether there is material and substantial evidence to support the decision that the zoning board of appeals made. So, that's one alternative would be to appeal the zoning board of appeals decision out to the circuit court out in Ponnetle, Oakland County. The second thing, and that's indicated in the letter, is that the zoning board of appeals does have a rule that provides that it may rehear cases if certain requirements are met. And those requirements say that if new evidence is submitted, which could not reasonably have been presented at the original meeting, or whether there was a material change in the facts of the case. If either of those, or one year had elapsed, obviously, that's not an issue here. But if one of those first two criteria is met, the zoning board of appeals could elect to rehear that matter. And so, that would have to be some kind of petition by anybody that there are those two criteria, one of the two have been met, and you ask the zoning board to rehear the case. So, those are the only two, again, the law says their decision that they made on February fourth is final. You only have two options here, and that would be you appeal it out to circuit court, and there are time restrictions when that appeal has to take place. Or you could ask for a rehearing if you feel that there's new evidence or there has been a material change in the facts. And that's really where this council is, because that is a quasi judicial body, the zoning board of appeals, that exists under state law to decide these cases. It's not something that the council had the right to, to decide. So, the council really has no authority now to go and tell the zoning board of appeals, uh, don't, don't rule that way, take it back. They, they just don't have that authority.
By state law.
So, by state law.
Right. So, what's being said, Mrs. Jones, is that you've got some options here. And those options are indicated in the letter. And unless there's new evidence that's been presented, you can go to the Oakland County Circuit Court, and you can file an appeal. So, it's out of our hands. We can't do anything at this council, city council, to alter the decision that's been made by the zoning board of appeals. We, we can't do anything.
But I wanted to just follow up and make sure that, you know, you, I know you had met with Terry Crowe. I know that Terry had mentioned that, you know, we were, there was efforts to make sure that landscaping was provided. I think the issue is you didn't want people looking into your backyard. And I think that, that, I wanted, I'm just curious what happened to that conversation? So, that we're trying to, you know, have, we're trying to have the same four-story building that we approved, but we do wanna have a respect for your privacy, which is your concern here. And I'm just curious as to what the result of that conversation was? About the landscaping that was gonna shade over and camouflage anything?
Well, through the chair, Terry wasn't at the meeting.
Okay.
And, and the petitioner was extremely concerned that the people behind the development there have appropriate screening. The board said, you know, that they would like to see a wall. Mr. Jones said, well, whatever they want. If they want a wall, they'll put a wall up. If they don't want a wall, they'll put landscaping, whatever they want, trees, bushes. I'm gonna meet with the, you know, with the neighbors, you know, discuss, and whatever they want, that's what we'll do. And that was in the minutes, so.
Okay, next, that would be great, but he's willing to work with them to give the privacy needed for.
Mr. Crowe did have a subsequent meeting with Ms. Jones regarding that issue. So, I don't know if you're asking for updates from that.
Well, no, yeah, I just, you know, short of the council not being able to do anything, you know, we wanted to make sure that at least your main concern was addressed some other way. You know, the, the option of, you know, pushing it back or removing a floor isn't on the table for this council. But the option of the developer trying to shade over and make sure that nobody can look into your backyard is on the table, and that was one of your concerns.
I want to hear what Mr. Crowe has to say.
Based on your direction, I contacted Ms. Jones the following day at the council meeting. Set up a meeting at three thirty to actually come out to her house. I brought Ms. Noreen Klosowski, our landscape designer, with, with us as well, so I could see the situation firsthand. And I met with Ms. Jones to talk about the options of screening. She had concerns that she kept bringing up regarding the decision that was made by the ZBA. And tried to focus the attention on the screening options. There was extensive landscaping that was provided as part of the site plan. And I was discussing with Ms. Jones about possible residential fencing and that I would facilitate a meeting with all of her neighbors and Mr. Jonah at some future point, I suggested, over coffee. She invited her neighbors just immediately to the north. We had the same discussion. And also, she had invited Ms. English to come to the meeting. And unfortunately, our meeting broke down a little bit, too much focused on what had happened at the ZBA. And we weren't able to resolve anything with the landscape screening. But I did offer to facilitate a meeting with Mr. Jonah and the five residents at a future date, and I suggested possibly over coffee, to discuss screening options. So, there was, there's landscape screening that's currently provided as part of the plan, and we were gonna discuss other additional screening options. And unfortunately, the discussion kept going back to the decision at the ZBA, which I stated I had no control over.
So, the option is still on the table by Mr. Jonah to provide the adequate screening.
Additional screening, on top of what was approved in the site plan. And I, and I continue, will offer to facilitate a meeting with Mr. Jonah and the five residents to discuss further options.
And we'll make sure that meeting's attended.
That's right.
All right, Mr. Cizer.
Um, last fall, as this project was going through the process, Councilman Cumberford and I walked the whole fence line. And right now, there, um, on the backyard of those properties, there are sizable trees. Um. Yeah, right layers, yeah, there's, um, weeds, there's, well, there was junk dump there, but, um, there is a lot of growth in the back there. I mean, it seemed to me that, um, it seemed like a natural idea to clean it up but work with what is existing, because it does provide a lot of, uh, uh, screen. Uh, and we, we walked it, 'cause that was one of our concerns about, about the residential area. And on a Saturday morning, Don and I went out there.
The existing conditions are about a three-foot chain link fence with a lot of weed tree growth.
Two to seven.
Right, but this, the plan has six-foot and higher evergreen trees that'll be planted along the back row. But that may not be enough, and it's gonna take time for them to grow. So, one of the things that I was discussing was possibly a nicer, six-foot-high residential fence in addition to the landscape screening. And that's, that's an option that we will continue to explore with the developer at, at the, at the neighbors' desire, if they wish to go that route.
But, but you're gonna make sure that that meeting's attended, the neighbors' meeting.
Yes.
All right, Ms. Seymour.
Yeah, you know, I, I can understand her frustration when you have a ninety-five foot space right behind your house, and you expect to have that for many development, and then suddenly that's cut in half to forty-five feet. That's not much space. I, I mean, I wish we could do something, but I think the thing to do is put up a, a wall, not a fence, but a wall. You said that Mr. Jonah was willing to do that. Did I not hear you correctly?
Well, I think Mr. Cumberford mentioned the wall at the ZBA meeting, and I was not at the ZBA meeting.
Okay, if he's willing to put up a wall, that would certainly be better than a fence. I mean, you know, she's going from ninety feet to forty-five feet and didn't even know what was happening, so I, my sympathies are with her. I think most of the council could be all the same way, but if he's willing to put up a wall, that's what I think should be done.
Is it nice of her to look at a, a stone wall?
Well, she's worried about, you know, plants, yes, plants in front of that, plants in front of that. But the wall would give her more, I think, more, if she wants it, more of a sense of privacy. I would, I would, you know, whatever, that would, maybe she doesn't want that. I'm just saying that should certainly be an option.
She was open to discussing the issue of screening with the neighbors, so.
Well, we know the options on the floor, and it's definitely an option. And Mr. Jones is working with the regular. So, Ms. Jones, we still encourage you to work with the developers to see, you know, exactly what can be done. He's promised to give you a wall, a fence, some re, landscaping to really ease the discomfort that's taken place. But as of what this body can do, we cannot do anything with the board. Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, the next person is Stephanie English.
Two eight seven three five, I'm sorry, Stephanie English, two eight seven three five, San Carlos, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero seven six. And this is Mr. Arthur Musibian. He is the, one of the residents. He does not speak English. He speaks Armenian as primary language. Um, I met with he and his wife on Sunday. Um, she works sixteen hours a day in Northville in a restaurant, two double shifts. Starts at nine, gets off at midnight. Um, I read the letter that was written, and I, um, I wrote it because Mrs. Jones couldn't write it. I wrote it in five minutes to get over here to sign. Um, I did read the letter by our building official that says, if you believe that you have new evidence that could not have reasonably been presented at the public hearing, or you have evidence of material change in the facts of the case, then you can go about changing. If, I always try to see, because you're gonna, they may have to get an attorney, and how would this be presented? I would challenge that new information has come forward just on the fact that the status quo in terms of delivering communications to these neighbors was inadequate. Not challenging or criticizing or being combative with the process. You write a letter, it has a lot of technical language. This is only one of the families. The family right next to him, when I went, uh, Sunday to go knock on the door, they don't speak English at all. They are Taldean, from the Old Country, literally, and black. The wife speaks absolutely no English at all. So, now we have sixty percent of those homeowners, five homeowners, three households, sixty percent that either fall under the English language provision that our city is supposed to be enacting. Um, we're supposed to have, you know, provision per whatever the transportation monies that, you know, were supposed to be audited in October. They fall under that issue right now. Also, too, if I were a lawyer combating this issue to give them another opportunity to be heard at the, um, at, or another ZBA hearing, I would challenge, she's given me permission to say it, I would challenge Mrs. Jones's disability under the ADA. Those are two things that I'm bringing to attention on behalf of them. I am not Armenian. Even sitting back there, it was hard to get him to spell his name because he says it in the Armenian way. A V is not a V, it's a, and then he shows me his license. I mean, we, I'm African American, he's Armenian, and I'm advocating for him. I brought additional information that you did not know. I, I respect your process, but it was status quo. And in this multicultural city, that's where an effective diversity plan is necessary. Warren has it for their school system, 'cause I had to come and study so I could present actual information. Warren's school board has all of their school board registration processes in ten languages, because that's how multicultural Warren is. So, when you go onto their school board website, you can plug in which language you want in terms of registering your kid for school. We are a diverse city. I respectfully say we, we did our duty to write the letter. But sixty percent of the homeowners, 'cause I would, if I was an attorney, I'm throwing out some big numbers. Sixty percent of the, of the residents have either, they fall under the EOP problem or E, uh, English language provision or ADA. If I were blind and I'm managing in my household, I couldn't read the letter. There would have to be provision for me. If I was deaf, a provision for me. It, it is embarrassing for her, but she's given permission to say. She may be functionally illiterate, but, you know, if she reads on a fourth or fifth grade level, she can function in society. But when it comes to delivering this, then our status quo of communication is, is not relevant. And we have to re-engineer that process to give them equal access to opportunity to be served correctly. I am tired. I don't wanna do this. I am moving, in the process of a divorce move, and I'm taking personal time to do this. I only give you access to it so you know what my commitment is. I have been a diversity champion for years, and I probably could swing a consultation with their attorney to say, this is how I would leverage it. This is, this is the assumption I would make. I would bring in that this was the new information that you needed to give equal access to opportunity to someone who is different from the. to someone who is different from the status quo, and that's speaking English or being able to read it. They deserve it.
And they need their time and stuff.
Okay.
But I hope you heard the previous conversation we had.
I follow the process. Well, no, they can, just build it.
But they can, but what, yes, right. I, all right, okay.
We're going to move on to, I, well, we've got a letter. Mr. Dorn.
Yes. This is, I have, for this, tonight's agenda, rather items. The hardest sort of one, we only have two asphalt hot boxes for patching hot holes. Normally, we borrow a third one from Oakland County Road Commission, but there's been so much demand for the third one that we've been having a hard time. We got it twice in the last few weeks. We want to buy, from the Department of RME of Midland, a one-ton tandem asphalt piece of, hot patcher. The amount is seventeen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Like to ask, also ask for a Rule 10. This, we're buying it through a state bid process, so that fulfills our requirements relative to a competitive bid situation. Move the Rule 10?
Support.
I motion, Mr. Dyson, for the, for the, for the, for the, in on favor.
Aye.
I oppose motion.
I move for the authorization to purchase one asphalt hot patcher.
Support.
I motion, Mr. Dyson, for the, for the, for the, for the, purchase the patcher. Have a, pardon me, question on the favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
You could probably get a, make this a public-private partnership by just putting a couple out in front of the car, and your driver comes by and don't need money.
Yeah, just one thing, because it was brought up earlier, and it was for Shelley's benefit, about what I mentioned at the last council meeting. I just wanted to codify in the tax abatement process that we make sure that, you know, we always say, you know, report to the Career Center, report to any sort of neighborhood initiative. I just wanted to see if there's a way to codify that actually into the tax abatement process. We do it unofficially, informally. I would like to see if there's a way to do that formally. I brought it up at the last council meeting, I think. I'm just making this a response to she wasn't here the last time. I'm not asking for anything other than to let her know what we were talking about.
Oh, Council, we, I brought this up to us. I have another item to discuss, and at that time, Mr. Lance was not available, and that is gaining control of our time under the public comment section of our city health and needs. And I'm seeing if we can get a consensus to reduce the amount of time from five minutes to five minutes. Because we last, last year, we had seven people that spoke to us on our, you know, giving us, if you say yes, that's fine, if you say no, that's fine, but I wanted to have some, that's something we can do. Consider reducing the amount of time for a public comment.
Three minutes and three, or two and five? Really, three, think of.
Well, I'm in favor of it, because if somebody comes up with an issue that really requires more, their time to explain to council, the chair can grant them that extra time. You know, the whole idea of that, because we come to council with issues that they haven't been able to resolve, other than the steps. Or to tell something that we might want to know if there's some exciting event coming to the, with our council. So if there is, excuse me, there is a flexibility, if more time is legitimate and you need it, it can be granted. So I think it would be in the best interest to go back to the three minutes, so I would support that.
Well, you have seven days with thirty-five minutes, which extends the time that the council has to be here. And I'm not talking about our time, or your, or anything like that, but the city itself, the community, everything else, we pay more for the longer time council is in session. And we have to cut that back.
Yeah, I mean, we all know this is a fair path now, but I would say that we just removed a public hearing from every tax abatement. Again, we're elected to serve, and I don't have a problem staying, you know, two minutes longer for each person, because that's my responsibility as a council member, and I know what I signed up for. So I'll just echo the non-support of this that I expressed in November of 2012, the non-support of this that I expressed in December 2012, the non-support of this I expressed in December 2013, and let's add March of 2014 to that list.
And then, Chair, you know, you know, things can go along as they have been for years, you know, with the Open Meetings Act, and they used to talk indefinitely. And each person came forward and spoke through an issue that had to do with the city, and gave input. I think when, when you get to a point, we started having like seven of the communications, and then you have six public hearings. And then they take not only the communications, but use it for public hearings to continue as communications. Now you're running into a situation, I think, that is misusing the status of the city to hear each individual. And, you know, I have been, you know, years, just being council president and whatever, and I used to stay here till two or three o'clock in the morning and listen to people as we hashed out, to try to make the city better by together partnering with them to discuss an issue and work on it, try to get something resolved. But that isn't what's happening now. Now, we don't have communications to dug into things and try to correct things. It just becomes, you know, a time to say whatever they want to say, or the individual wishes to say, and go on. We really don't need five minutes for a person to say what they want to say. Sometimes the individuals stand up there and say, is my time up? And just stand there, just to abuse the privilege of speaking. I believe in free speech. And I, anytime anybody wants to speak, they can speak to me for all they want, all night if they want. But they're going to be talking about the city issue, how we can make the city better. If there's something wrong with the city, just sit, get together and try to correct it. And when the individuals do sign up on Wednesday, it gives an opportunity for staff people to reach out to them and try to correct it, or answer the question, and resolve an issue. They come before a council and bring up the same item if they didn't get satisfaction from staff. And we also have the opportunity to send it back to administration and get the answer. So I think that whatever, you know, we're accused of doing by cutting off people's right to speak is just pure nonsense, because what it becomes that is speaking out, it's harassment. And alcohol is exactly what it is, all right? And, you know, and I don't care, you know, whether it be five minutes or ten minutes, you know, I mean, I can take the heat all night if I want, it's nothing bad. But, you know, if you had an extra hour to talk about how we're going to get bonds out so that we can sell the bonds to get the money to fix our roads, you know, but what happens, we spend our time, you know, doing our meeting and then listening to things that we cannot resolve in the same night, instead of going to the procedure of staff people working on it, getting back to us and saying, you know, we met this, and we need council's approval for this, or whatever it be, and we take action. But just to sit there and not take care of the urgent, urgent things that we have to take care of. You know, we had the bond issue, you know, February of last year, to deal with getting some road stuff, for example, to pay for the road. There's no money in majors, there's no money in locals, all right? And we should be spending our time in the public's interest to get this city back on track and get its infrastructure fixed. And we don't spend time on that. We spend time in listening to individuals come before us on, you know, when it says whatever matters. Well, that's great. But if something is a real major concern, tell us what it is, and let us deal with it, and let us, if we can't do it, they'll explain why not, that if we can fix it, we'll fix it. The city has always worked with its residents, always. In all the years I've been here, we've braced our back to help out our residents, and that's what makes something special. But, you know, what do we spend our time on? And how do we spend our time for the benefit of all the people in the city? I mean, you hear things, you've got to hear the responses from the public, why they watch television. I mean, it's a joke. And I don't intend to make Southfield a joke. I intended to be the community that does things in a business manner and gets the city on track, get the economy in the city going, get jobs going in the city, get the roads fixed, whatever we need to do, you know, get it fixed, get it done the best way we know how. But to sit here before, you know, like I said, it isn't just communications, but if there's be five public hearings, you know, it's going to be five minutes, five minutes, five minutes, five minutes. And now you've got, you know, ninety minutes going, that you're just listening to the same thing, and it's not addressing the opposing cons of the project, maybe one sentence, unless they're trying to fix and heat. And I can take heat all day long, you know, and I'll say that again. But I'd rather spend my time doing my job, and that is protecting the city's interests and the citizens of this city, and fixing the things we have to fix. And that's why I think whatever we can do to find us more time, years ago, we used to meet on Mondays and Thursdays, and once a month on Saturdays, all right? Now we have two meetings a month. And so we have to use those two meetings a month to the best of our ability to get our job done. And the more time we have, the more time we can gain. Now, I've been sitting here since five minutes to five, ran into Pam Gerald at the post office. I didn't hurry to get her, because I was late. First night planned meeting, right? So I've been here since five o'clock, you know, and I don't mind it, you know. My wife will have dinner for me, because we can't get food either anymore, you know.
I have to think, I don't, three or five minutes is not my issue. My issue is, and it sort of goes along with what Don just said, I would prefer to see a rule that said you must, if you come to our meeting to address an issue, it must be something within the purview of the Southwood City Council. To hear stuff about the Constitution, or, you know, Black History Month, or, you know, all this, all this stuff that, that some of the speakers, and one person in particular, the school board, parents, they amended their public participation, you had to speak on a school issue. It had to be something under the purview of the Southwood Board of Education. I don't, I, the, this is not, you know, a place to be on a soapbox, or what's the park in London where you go and speak and rant about anything? That's not what our meeting should be. So I would prefer a rule like that. And secondly, if you're going to change the rule, you ought to look at Rule Five that addresses the speaking on the agenda. Because you can take, you can, you can address public participation, and you're going to turn around, and there's a loophole.
When we had put a proposal in front of you as a pass, it was to change Rule Five to simply say that it would be three minutes for your commentary. That's how the change would be.
Yeah. You know, I think the state legislature had a, when they came up with the Open Meetings Act, I think it was because there were boards and local governments that were freezing their, their citizens out, and wouldn't allow anyone to speak on anything. But I think what has happened is the Open Meetings Act has deteriorated to unanticipated consequences, and that is the loophole of, you know, ranting and raving about.
The master.
Yeah, about things. As Mr. Seaver said, three or five minutes is not my big issue either. I would hope that the people that come to the microphone would be responsible enough to contain their remarks to something that is pertinent to what we're, what we're dealing with. Unfortunately, time after time, it's not, and almost all the time it's not. The thing that I find, and I get stopped in the grocery store, I get stopped at the gas station, I get stopped at, at the cleaners, of people saying, when are you going to do something about those folks that keep coming to the microphone? Because they're just wasting time, and I don't know how you guys put up with it. And I said, well, we have to put up with it, because it's part of the Open Meetings Act. But the sentiment of the population, I have yet, of all the years I've been on council, I have yet to have someone come up to me outside of this room and say, I think they're doing a good job. I think they're doing the right thing. I have yet to have that happen. It's overwhelming. I would say it's unanimous that they feel sorry for us having to put up with what goes on during the public comment part. And it would just seem to me that a responsible person coming to the microphone would make a responsible comment about a real issue. If we reduce to three minutes, the folks that do have real issues are going to feel intimidated that they can't, they don't have enough time to get it out, even though there is flexibility on the part of them. The council president, or the council can rule the president if you get four votes to rule the president. But I just don't see any, any reason that people have to get up time after time after time, unless they're going to make some pertinent comments on the issue at hand. So, again, it's not three or five minutes. Besides that, I just, we have seven, seven people talking for five minutes, that's thirty-five minutes. We have seven people talk for three minutes, that's twenty-one minutes, it's fourteen minutes. I mean, that's fourteen minutes, you know? We waste that much.
Like I did.
Yes, yes. So I don't think three or five minutes is the thing. I think it's the responsibility of the people that come to the microphone is what concerns me.
Can't do anything about that. I can't do anything.
No, you can't do anything about it. Hopefully, you just, folks will grow up.
I think you can. You rule them out of order, that, and you make the rule that you must speak about something pertinent to the purview of the city council or the city of Southfield.
Yeah, and talk about having pictures in the calendars, not.
No, or the master, take it over the world.
Yeah.
You know, whatever, you know.
Oh, I agree in concept, but obviously, we've experienced the same problem when we come to the public hearings, and it's explained over and over again. The commentary during a public hearing is to relate to the issue that's the subject of the public hearing. And so then there's some really tenuous kind of connection, and the rest of the time will end up being something that isn't connected.
That's right.
So it's very hard to, to kind of draw that out.
That's where individual responsibility needs to come to play.
They're doing it over on Lasher Road, that's all I'll tell you.
Mr. Moore.
Yeah, and I think we should just close this out and just take a consensus vote. Yeah, and I think we should just close this out and just take a consensus vote on it. But I, I do want to say to my, to my colleague, Mr. Prakash, I think it's just a philosophical difference. I don't, I think you're making valid points. I, I, I don't, I don't disagree with what you say, but I wanted to, like, you know, give a little bit of background of why I'm so passionate about this. I'm not defending, you know, this, these long orations of nonsense. But, you know, my degree's in journalism, and I just distinctly remember, you know, being drilled at Michigan State Journalism School about the First Amendment. And we actually had to recite the First Amendment before the start of every class. Uh, it was just something that is just innate within me to, you know, recite it time and time again. And I, I just, I'm worried that, you know, we're going to start thinking about speaking at these council meetings as a privilege, but it's a right. Um, it makes no citizen better than a, any council member. And some of the things that frustrate me most when, when they come and, and when certain people come and speak happens in less than five minutes. Typically, the, I, I get most frustrated with, with somebody who speaks in three minutes about garbage, um, and then five minutes about, uh, about something that's meaningful. I just, that's my concern, is just the, the privilege versus rights. It doesn't, you know, if somebody wants to, to speak about the master, I don't, you know, that's their prerogative, but that's also their right. I think we should just go for a consensus vote on it, or just a vote around.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Madam Chairman.
Excuse me, we're, we're not going to have the comment, that's the fact of the story.
You know, you know, I believe in the Constitution too. And I don't think we've ever denied a person the right to speak. And, and so where are we in, in, in default of the Constitution when we sit here and we listen to the person speak? We allow them to meet with our staff. We address them and find out what their problem is. We, if, if they didn't get satisfaction from the staff, as they said, we, we give it to the administrator. We never leave them hanging. We bought out planted roses in that ladies' yard over there in the, in the north east section of the, of the city a hundred times and still, and still couldn't satisfy her, because it wasn't where it was planted when, before the road guys came.
In Marshall.
Oh, yeah. But so, so I think we have, just why we just been Southfield and the city that listens and tries to partner with their residents the best we can. But, but when does it come time? I mean, are you going to sit there and be harassed all night and sit there? You, 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 you try to be kind and sit there and listen. You know, sometimes you feel like just getting up and going, you know? But, but, you know, it becomes a time, and I, I do, I refer you that, that people should understand that why we're here is a business meeting.
Yep.
It is a business meeting. It's not an open forum. If you want to have an open forum, you hold an open forum. And everybody can get up there and speak all day, all night, whenever you want. But this is a business meeting. I mean, you can't go anywhere, you know, the, the, both of the judges keep talking, you'll get hammered down so fast, you know? And he believes in the Constitution or her. And I, so, so I, I guess what's really bringing me to the point is, is I'd rather talk about running up the city, getting some of the problems fixed, finding out where we're headed, uh, in, in all of the various important decisions we have to make, and, and how we're going to arrive at a decision together to make a better city for them. And, and, and I, this may be just a nuisance kind of a thing, but, but you know, what are all these other cities doing here? What does the school board do? Why do they do it? They don't, they believe in the Constitution. You know, so anyway, I just had to get that up.
We'll, we'll move forward. It's really, you know, this is where leadership has to make a tough decision. And it's not that we're taking what he described, but we really, uh, I just don't think it's time to control the meeting and control the time that, that loosely spent.
On a rule ten?
We need a rule ten.
We don't need a rule ten, do we?
If you're going to bend your rules, oh, okay, okay.
If you're doing your time, okay.
Yeah, can I get a rule ten?
I'll, um, rule ten, Madam Chair.
I'll support it.
We have a motion by Mr. Moore, supported by Mr. Prakash, for the ten, all in favor?
Aye.
All in your opposed?
No.
Yes, three, three notes that directly respect that. Uh, can I get a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
We have a motion by Madam Dean.
Cut the, you're going to say three minutes?
Roll, roll five, under the rule. Rule five, for three minutes.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Lance, supported by Mr. Moore, to amend rule five from five minutes to three minutes. All in favor? All in aye and opposed?
No.
Three opposed? All right, thank you. Any other items we brought?
You want a four?
Oh, we have.
Yeah, one.
Yes, three opposed. Are there any other items we brought to the conference?
I do. Uh, one of the, uh, uh, folks that I work with on volunteer is also the, uh, uh, public relations person for State Farm. And State Farm has a twenty-five thousand dollar grant that they're giving out, uh, and they're giving out four hundred of these, and you don't have to be part of the local government. Anybody can apply for this grant. Anybody. And you can, you can apply up to three times. So what I did was, I made copies enough to go around the table. You can apply for anything that you will, that will help make your community better. And, uh, it opened today, and they're taking the first four thousand, the first four thousand applications, and then they're going to shut it off after four thousand applications. And they're going to end up giving up four hundred, uh, twenty-five thousand dollar, uh, grants. Uh, so, uh, I thought I'd grant tonight, so anybody, and it doesn't have to be for the city. It could be for, if you want to do it for your school, if you want to do it for your neighborhood, you want to do it for, uh, whatever, it's up to you. All right?
Hi, thank you.
I want to take a trip to the, uh-
Do you have to be a Facebook user?
You have to be a Facebook user?
Is this in a newspaper?
Pardon me?
This was in the-
Yeah, it might have been in the newspaper, true, yeah.
Oh, Facebook, you're the constituent?
Yeah, I must have, I must have reached the twenty-five thousand.
No, it just-
Just started.
It just started today. But they, but she suggested that you do it right away, because the first four thousand, after four thousand, they're going to shut it off.
Do they, uh, you have to sign up so that they know your Facebook, correct? So, so they're collecting, so they're collecting-
Well, it shows you how you go in to, to get it.
Yeah, so we should do this.
That's it for me.
Thank you.
All right, team, that would be very good.
Madam?
Yes.